Anybody like that? Hey, Rob. I don't think anybody's up there.
We'll get started in just a minute. Now we got that. We're just getting the auto and the video up for recording. There is a sign-in sheet that is available. Appreciate if everybody would pass it around if it's coming around or come to the front if it's not. And with that...
I'm ready.
Okay. Rob, she's ready here. So, one last step and then we can get started. That can't be displayed. I don't know why that is.
Oh, no.
I don't know. This part came up. This part didn't come up. But, that's why we got this part. Okay, good evening. Welcome to the City of Huber Heights City Council Work Session. Pretend I do that. March twenty-second, two thousand sixteen, starting at six oh three P.M. We have one, two, three, four, five, six council members present. We have two council members attending a training as well. So, they won't be here tonight. Approval of minutes? Do we have any minutes for approval tonight?
There are none.
Okay, great. Moving on to topics of discussion. Rose Music Center is the first thing that's on the agenda. I do not like this setup here, but okay. Mr. Schomer.
Okay, thanks. I know a lot of the discussion and questions and inquiries have really been around a lot of financials. But, in addition to that information, we've got a great representation from Mimi, the organization that obviously we partnered with in running and managing the operations of the facility. And they are here in attendance. And I'm sure that they've got a couple of comments that they can provide in. And I'll call on them here briefly in a moment. And also representatives from Cincinnati Symphony Orchestra, who does the accounting both for Mimi and for the Rose Music Center, that we were able to get the information for that. One caveat to that is, is as I indicated before, we, as a governmental agency, have an annual audit that is conducted on all the finances. That is still ongoing. It was engaged and started with the financials of that at the beginning of the year. And Jim, I would assume we wrapped up relatively soon. But, we've certainly got a lot of information and that we gathered that we'll certainly kind of refer to and share. But, as far as the official verification and auditing of that, some of this stuff is, again, preliminary. But, pretty much the final based on, you know, the numbers here. The auditors are just making sure that practices and everything adds up. So, that's all good. We had a list of questions that were submitted. We did not and do not plan to go line by line, question by question. A lot of the questions can be answered in just a discussion and explanation of a variety of things that follow along with that. So, what we'd like to do is just start into an overview of... First of all, I would ask Mimi to kind of give an overview and some of the things upcoming and the results of last year and kind of explain how things occur. Then, we can jump into some of the financials, which I'm sure we'll answer and go through a lot of the questions and perhaps generate a couple of follow-ups. So, without further ado, if I could ask Mr. Smith to just give us a brief overview of what you see to be the position that we're in going into our second year and some of the great things to come for two thousand and sixteen and some of the successes we've seen and some of the changes that we've made. And I know we talked a little bit about it before. If you could touch on that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Sir, do you mind coming forward? Thank you.
We're sure to hear you and see you.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing us to be here. I'm happy to answer any of the questions that you have and provide some clarity. It's a very interesting and complicated business at times. We're extremely pleased with the first year of operating. When this building was being built and you were in conversations with multiple potential service providers, the one thing we stated clearly through the entire process is that this was an extremely competitive area of the country. And what I mean by area of the country extending south to Louisville, Lexington, north up into, one could argue, Detroit, Pittsburgh, west even to Chicago. And what I mean by that is that the artist's acquisition of talent, it's not like going to Walmart and going down an aisle and pulling an artist off the shelf. We're in competition for the number... An artist will go out for maybe three months or twenty-six shows or fifty-eight shows. And that's all determined by their managers and agents and handlers. And then, everybody gets in a queue trying to position themselves to attract that artist at the best possible fee arrangement in your potential or particular market. There are casinos. There are arenas, multiple arenas just down the road in Columbus, Indianapolis, new arenas in Lexington, Louisville, or updated in Lexington. Multiple casinos buying talent. So, it's a highly competitive venue. We're pleased to tell you that we anticipated and shared internally, we thought in the first season and the startup year that you'd do fifteen, eighteen shows. I believe it was nineteen was... Or twenty-nine was the show count. But, most importantly, you built a state-of-the-art facility. And the artists' managers in Los Angeles, Nashville, New York, San Francisco, we routinely send... Ed Morrell does primarily all of our buying. And he's made five or six trips in the last year on behalf of Rose as well as our other facilities that we manage. And overwhelmingly, the comments are positive and enthusiastic about the venue, about access, proximity to other areas of the immediate Midwest. And ticket sales have reflected that in year one. We did some experimenting purposefully in different categories of music. We fine-tuned and determined that going forward, there are certain kinds of artists that are selling better than others. At this point, going into sixteen, you were going to easily have twenty-nine shows. Ticket sales are up three hundred percent over last year's same time period. Caveat, there are more shows on sale at this point in time than there were last year. Sponsorship sales are up ten point two percent at this point going into this year. Premium seats sales and memberships are up sixteen percent over last year. It is a very positive story in only the second year of this venue. I've heard stories repeated to me. I'm not sure by whom or specifically regarding venues that took seventeen years in the area to generate a profit and to be positive. I think you have something to be very proud of. And I hope that we all move forward, pull on the same rope to have an immensely successful year two. I'm happy to answer specific questions. I know that was a bit of a rambling speech.
Counsel?
Mr. Schauer? Thank you. Mr. Smith, thank you. And the rest of the representatives that have made the trip here to speak with us today. Not only myself, but also many members of the community have had a lot of the same questions since the inception, the build, and the finalizing of the first year of the Rose Music Center. Some of the information you provided today is great. I think moving forward into two thousand and sixteen, we are definitely looking for a productive year. One of the biggest questions that is at the top of my list is what did you and Mimi and the group, along with the city, learn from two thousand and fifteen? What was the good, the bad, and what can we learn from going into two thousand and sixteen?
That question is really asked by us internally almost on a weekly basis. We'll do post-show mortems, if you will, after every event that we participate in. As an overview going forward, that's your specific question, concession areas, for example. We're looking at more individual point of sales on certain shows with certain specialty items, maybe a particular craft beer on certain artists. The audience is more inclined to look at that. Mixed drinks on other shows tend to sell a little bit better. So, really, every night is a different business analysis. Some nights, it's Bud Light is about the only thing that's being sold. And other nights, you'll see more wine and more mixed drinks. So, what went well? You built a fabulous facility. The positive comments with regard to no lines at the concession stands or minimal lines are a good thing. Restrooms, virtually zero complaints, particularly via social media, with regard to access restrooms, no lines at restrooms. And quite frankly, believe it or not, restrooms are a revenue generator. And that may sound odd. But, if one can use a restroom and then access the concession stands relatively easily, you're making another sale. From a booking standpoint, this is not really a surprise to us, but we wanted to test jazz and maybe some of the more eclectic styles of music. Has an audience here, just not enough yet to generate a positive cash flow. Our objective going into year two is instead of drawing within a thirty or forty mile radius, we want to push this out to fifty, sixty, seventy miles because people will travel for a patron experience that is second to none. Easy parking, easy access in and out, back on the interstate, easy access to concessions, ticket prices that are reasonable. While I'm mentioning that, and again, I'm sorry to ramble, but I think it will be helpful answering your question, one of the things that we learned is that artist fees have continued to go up across the world. And we fight that daily. As a result, ticket prices have to adjust. But, Bill Lane, who does our sponsorship work, has worked an arrangement out with one of the local businesses, regional businesses that we'll announce in the next few days, where a certain percentage of seats at Rose are going to be priced at a very low price. Now, on some shows, it may be two hundred tickets, others it may be eight hundred, and some it may be a hundred tickets. But, it's to provide an access point on every show for that portion of the audience that price is a real issue for. The issue that we had with regard to sound, immediately the city, and we got together, best practices, and some places where we've had similar and put the sound curtaining up. We've also, I think, the most dynamic change we're going to make this year is most all, in fact, all shows but one at this point are going to start at seven P.M., meaning instead of eight, as a result of the seven, they'll end an hour earlier than an eight o'clock show would be. So, closer to ten P.M. as opposed to eleven P.M. That should be a positive move with regard to sound infiltration potentially. Sound is a difficult thing to deal with because it's affected by humidity, wind, temperature, any other, any number of issues out of our control. But, those things we can control, like the start time of the show, I think that'll make it a more palatable arrangement. Other good things that we did, we heard nothing but favorable comments about the staff via social media, letters. Professional staff courteous, helpful. That doesn't always happen. We hear from other venues, social media sites, that the staff ignores them or couldn't care less or they're just there to watch the show. There's probably a dozen other things that... If you have any specific questions you'd like me to clarify, I'd be happy to do that.
Sure. And again, I certainly appreciate that. I did submit a list of twenty questions to our city manager as well as several other individuals. Most of them are more on the financial aspect. And I do understand that he... That information is through our... Through Plattenburg at this time and awaiting, you know, final approval to release a lot of that. So, unfortunately, a lot of my questions do result around that.
I would refer to them anyway, to the city.
A couple of quick hits here. I did hear about some of the artists complaining about... And this is just my feedback that I hear. And I was wanting to know if you heard the same thing about the time of day and the sun that was coming in that was affecting their show. Did you hear anything of that nature?
No. I hear more about it in Cincinnati, frankly, the way the building is situated. Late afternoon, early evening, that one corner of the building where the sun is setting. If it's a problem, it's easily rectified with some lightweight sunscreen that we could look at hanging. If you have specific information that that's been an issue, we'll be happy to look at that.
And again, you know, unfortunately, like I said, a lot of my questions do result around a lot of the financials. Again, I'm gonna break here and let any of my... Rest of my colleagues ask any questions. But, again, my appreciation for you showing up here. My biggest thing going into two thousand and sixteen, and I'm sure you will appreciate this as well as the rest of the folks here, I think a lot of the communication that we can get from our residents, our business owners in the city, and the more communication that we can have on how we can be productive and go into two thousand and sixteen and future years, not only as a community, but, you know, we have a business and that business needs to grow. We have a lot of quote-unquote "skin in the game." So, we all want to make sure that that facility is productive, successful for years to come. So, I know you've talked a little bit about social media and things of that nature. Do you guys have a social media page where residents and business owners can provide feedback? Do you have any type of that type of forum?
Well, the city instituted the website. And we data input. So, if... I'm assuming there's a place on the website. And if there isn't, it's easily added.
Absolutely. There's a Facebook page, there's a Twitter page, and there is a Instagram page. So, all outlets of social media. And that is monitored, responded to, all by Mimi. And I see regular interactions, reposts, et cetera, and commentary. In fact, whenever we have any type of commentary or feedback that comes through that, you know, they responded and I've seen that. So, they do have all outlets.
When I'm referring to social media, one of the vehicles that we use to measure impact, all of our venues have a... An email signup. So, we don't blanket email, just... We don't buy a list from somebody and just email. We'll take two or three or four years and encourage people by virtue of our... Your website as well as media, advertising, print, and encourage people to sign up for a newsletter or an email signup. And the reason why we do that is we want to see what kind of reach, how many people are joining the venue because they're happy and encouraged to be part of that. Your email page started out last year, obviously, with zero members. The building holds four thousand people. You have almost twenty-six thousand people who have asked to be sent a regular email notification about upcoming events and activities. That's an astounding number in one season. Now, by comparison, I'm happy to tell you that Riverbend PNC in Cincinnati, which is, you know, a twenty thousand seat venue and it's been there for thirty-three years, we have three hundred thousand email members. But, twenty-five thousand in less than a year is an impressive number. And those are all people that are taking your information about your facility and your shows and then telling other people about it and sending it off to their friends. And those people are joining your email list. So, we're not going to be surprised if that, you know, approaches seventy-five thousand or maybe more by the end of this second season.
Excellent. Thank you for your time.
Yes.
We enjoyed a couple of the shows there this past year. It's a wonderful facility and we thank you for all your work on it. Do you folks have any short-term or maybe three, five-year plan for how you're going to keep things current or update? Because usually, when you kick off your first season, you have bugs. Things didn't work exactly as you thought they would. Maybe technology wasn't as good or whatever. But, have you guys looked at what... Any future changes might... You might suggest so that we would kind of have a heads-up of what's coming?
Well, yes. But, most importantly, we got on board a little later than we would have liked to have been being engaged by the city. And so, some of the capital improvements that you made late in the game were ones that we strongly suggested and did benefit greatly. But, you'll... We don't anticipate, as well as you built the building, there being a need, for example, to... Which we've seen in virtually all of our other sites, building another restroom or adding another concession stand or expanding a dressing room area. You know, you put LED video boards in because LED currently is the absolute state-of-the-art and likely unnecessary for the foreseeable... We can do 4K and HD and all this stuff, but it's... It won't be necessary for a period of eight, ten years easily. So, you have the technology in terms of video, in terms of dressing rooms, concession equipment. You are staffed correctly at this point.
I guess I maybe don't agree with you on that.
Okay.
If you don't have HD or 4K, the folks that are in the audience are getting a shadow view of what's on the stage. And as all of our TVs and everything are going to higher resolution, why would our screens not go to higher resolution?
Because when you're... Well, they could very well. You may be absolutely right. But, at this point in time, the clarity of the LED screens at a live event where most of the attention in a small venue like this is in-person and focusing on the stage, the screens become an adjunct or a nice additional amenity. When the consumer gets to the point where, yeah, I've got to see it that in HD, that's a ridiculous-looking screen. But, that's not a question I can answer here and tell you I anticipate will be two years, four years, or six. My guess would be it will be longer than five years easily. I think the percentage of people that are currently sitting in their homes with 4K screens is probably less than a half a percent in the country. So, until we get to a point where the expectations are that I've got to have 4K, you know, at a live performance venue, it's a good question, one that I can't answer very accurately, I would say.
I can supplement. You talked about glitches and things like that. At the end of the very first show, and this is a benefit of bringing on an organization that has the experience and already knows the industry standards, at the end of the first show, we sat back... "we" meaning me and Scott and others and city staff and said, "It's like this has been going on for ten years." There was no chaos. There was nothing but a quality, great performance. And the audience was enjoying it. The food sales were... Or, the food and beverage sales were well. Everything was attended to. And there was just... I envisioned this kind of frantic, chaotic thing and, you know, which is typical for a new venture. But, honestly, sitting back at the end of it, it was as if it had been conducted at that site for ten years. And I think that, to answer your question about glitches and stuff, we didn't run into any, you know, of significance or anything. So, it really comes well with bringing in some experience and having great people showing up and supporting us there.
I agree with you one hundred percent. And not all glitches are visible to the audience. That's why I raised the question.
Well said.
Mr. Schauer?
Couple of questions first, though. Thank you for being here. It's an outdoor venue and I can't recall... I don't know if you do. Were there any events that either had to get moved on time or did Mother Nature cooperate enough with us with the fact that we've got a roof, that we didn't have any rainouts or lightning or anything like that?
Yeah, I was not at every show. But, to best of my knowledge, we didn't adjust a single event.
That's wonderful. I guess my second question then is going forward... Last year was obviously the startup year and still twenty-nine shows is phenomenal. The one thing I didn't see or hear anything about was community events or things that were not the, what I'll say, the top-tier or big-league performers. Is there any plan, anything that you can describe to us about more local events, more festivals or anything like that? Because as I recall, in our due diligence, when this city decided to do that, there was stuff under festivals and other things as part of what they recommended the city do as part of operating this venue. And I've had a couple of residents ask me if there's going to be stuff like that. And I've heard anecdote that responses were, "No, we don't do that and we don't plan to do that here." Can you speak to that?
Yeah, that wouldn't be an acceptable or accurate answer. The process, though, is... Gets complex. Meaning that the booking window for the national touring artists, which is your number-one priority, occurs beginning in November and peaks at around, well, currently, maybe three weeks or so ago. And then, it'll trickle out through early June. So, what happens is you've got a calendar. And we literally will have as many as a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five placeholders, if you will, on the calendar. Some artists will get in touch with, "Okay, we'd really like you to play. You're touring. What time period are you going to be in the Midwest?" "Well, we're going to be between July eighteen and August sixth. It's not narrowed at this point. Send us an offer." What that requires us to do is put what are called "holds" on that entire window. Now, we talked to another artist. And they're going to be August twenty-one through... So, they overlap. Now, we've got another hold. At any one time, we can have three to five holds on a particular day. Knowing that we're not going to get a hundred and eighty shows, we're going to end up with thirty shows and they'll clean themselves out. But, the artists have to route themselves through the area of the country. And you're in a good area of the country and in a bad. The good part is that you're accessible from Detroit, Chicago, Cincinnati, Pittsburgh. The bad is that you're accessible from all of those markets. So, it makes it more complicated to route the dates. If there was a community event planned that by their nature... And when you say "community event," I assume one in which is directly benefits and is low or no cost to the community or enough cost to pay just the operating expenses. And that date gets blocked out. And all of a sudden, X, Y, Z artist clears and says, "I need that date." Then, we've done you a disservice. It may appear that it's a great thing for the community that there's going to be a clown festival or whatever it is. But, it may have cost you significant revenue. So, when the city administration asked us over a year ago, we told them that the calendar ought to be prioritized or be recommended prioritize with national touring artists first. And then, once those were effectively done, that community events through the city could then or should be then placed on the calendar. Our experience, and this is by no means a reflection of what exactly or what even potentially happened here because I don't know, it's very often a good-natured... It's very often a, a good-natured, well-meaning group, once they start putting their math together and even just the general operating costs of, of getting into a facility like this, they underestimate the expense and they overestimate their sources of, of revenue. And what we certainly don't want to encourage is somebody losing $10,000 or $12,000. But by all means, if, if the city's objective is to do, um, other type events, all we'd ask is that there's, um, the wisdom to get the, the concert dates blocked out and then fill in behind.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I could add to that, and I'm, and part of the other discussion that isn't necessary on their side, from, from our side is, um, think of two different components. Think of operations of the Rose Music Center for, uh, for, for being a concert venue and what they're responsible for. The other items that you're discussing, the community events as such, is a parks and recreation detail. And, uh, you know, we have kind of a separate, uh, mechanism, uh, revenue, et cetera. So it's a matter of as we continue to have parks and rec discussions, as we've enhanced that and added some money to the budget, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, and as we engage our, our boards and commissions to work with the resources we currently have, uh, part of it is funding. To hold those events, those community-based events, you know, it, it certainly does require some funding. And, uh, you know, we need to first look internally at identifying the ability to do that, uh, and the ability to, to organize, you know, a recreational parks and rec community-based thing for that and, and after dates are open. If that venue isn't the spot to do something like that, you know, we've got some other great, um, you know, sites and, and locations to do. So, uh, that's a little bit deeper of a, of a discussion and conversation, but the second half of that, for those additional community events, it's not just a Rose Music Center thing. That's something globally that we're talking about as a community. And, you know, we look forward to additional set of resources and, and a facility to do that at.
It, it just gets really tough. I mean, even before we got here today, there was a phone call where three additional events became possibilities that had not been possibilities for a September window. Um, and that's important because if we can start, if you'll notice on the schedule on the website, uh, we've pushed the opening up earlier to take advantage of good, strong weather in May. And we'd like to extend out as far as we can get into September because the seasons are, are great for that. And the more dates that we can make available, uh, the more opportunity you have to, to, uh, to consummate deals.
And I can appreciate that. I know that without going into too much detail, because I think, uh, in talking with one of your associates, he gave me some information that, uh, was different then. But we were, as I understand, contacted about possibly hosting a, a presidential candidate come in and was looking to come to the Rose. And it just, the logistics didn't work out.
Well, and I'll be a bit more specific than that because I was directly involved. And not only did the logistics not work, but the particular candidate didn't want to pay virtually anything to utilize your facility. And I don't think that was reasonable.
I can understand. I, again, I, I don't want to debate too much with it, but the information that I was giving in terms of the price that we quoted is different than what I'm hearing from your side. And I have no reason to distrust what you've told me, but at the same token, I have absolutely no reason to distrust what this other person told me.
It got to the point, uh, three days before the potential Saturday, dealing with a, uh, campaign manager in Virginia. And we worked and worked and worked and adjusted and, and fine tuned. I think at the end of the day, it was a, uh, it was an evolving situation for them as well.
And I appreciate that. And like I said, I didn't intend to, to out that piece of it versus saying that's an interesting that we would be considered for that, um, as, as compared to, um, the convention center downtown to identify something that would be in the heart of, of the downtown. But they were looking to us versus that. That's a positive for us. Me and Whaley's going to be mad at me, but I don't care.
One of the things that really made it logistically difficult is your building is winterized. And to open the building that early, there was a potential risk that temperatures could drop. All the pipes are full of water because you have to have restrooms open for the public. And, and it was, it was a bit of a risk as well.
I understand. I just, even though we couldn't land that one here, no pun intended, I am hopeful that maybe something, another time may be able to come in on that. And then we have a local festival, our Marigold Festival, and I think it's been fantastic at its current location. At the same token, just in terms of brainstorming, I would love to see whether or not it would be even better at Rose or if it is a logistical nightmare to move it there versus where it's at.
We'd be, we'd be happy to talk to the organizers. I mean, if we can come up with three or four dates that are alternative.
It's, it's our, our, and beautification board, so at least we've got that. But, and I just, I understand that sometimes it's great to have an idea. There it is. I knew there was one other. Uh, the schools had talked about possibly wanting to look at for their graduation, but I know that there are logistics on that as well. So not digging into the, the deep mode on it right now, but just saying, if that is something that fits into the schedule, knowing that it's an ever-moving thing, even if, if we can do it for reduced cost or no cost for the schools, I don't know where we can go. One thing is we don't have to sell alcohol, although for a graduation, never mind. But the bright side there is we can then show a partnership to the schools on that. That might be helpful.
And I'd also like to let you know that I met, uh, at the open house, um, a teacher at the school and we spent a significant amount of time talking. And, um, they were working on, I volunteered to come in and teach to one of the business, or combined business classes about, uh, the industry. And I think they were trying to set that up. So we're trying to forge, you know, relationships as well.
My last point that I can think of at this point is, is a bit of a, a praise. Um, a couple of years ago, I got to go see an artist that I like. I'm, I'm a bit of a weird one, so I do like to go see some weird shows. And, um, he's gone to a neighboring, uh, uh, venue in the last couple of years, but they don't have a roof. And I know it always causes his show problem because the sun actually at that venue makes them have to start late because they face due west with no roof. I saw that that weird show is coming, um, this year to our Rose. And, uh, I can absolutely say that my wife and I are making a date night of that weird night somehow. So thank you for that.
That's new. I didn't know that there was another venue in the area. That's, thank you.
I don't really recognize, never mind. Thank you, sir.
Two quick comments, uh, to, to just expand a little bit regarding the, uh, the weather. I, I attended one of the shows last year that had a torrential downpour and nobody missed a beat. It was, um, in fact, it, it, it energized the crowd even more. They thought that it was really cool. So, uh, that, that, that's not an issue. Uh, the schools also, we've actually brought a group of the committee for the graduation committee. Uh, we've met. Uh, they, they've come, uh, represented for me. We were there as well. And so those, those conversations have been discussed. And there are some logistic things that it may not be the ideal spot, but we've encouraged them, hey, if you can make it happen, make it happen. So there's, there's certainly interest on both sides. So that's, that's ongoing. Just want to follow up with that.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, I just had a couple, uh, myself there. The 7:00 PM, uh, actually sounds really good for the, uh, some of the noise issues that we've, that we've had previously. Uh, is there any concern that it might be, uh, hot in there at that time for?
No, um, you know, it doesn't get dark usually until nine-ish or so anyway. Um, mostly what we were concerned with, with the 7:00 PM is parking lot access. And you have extraordinarily wonderful access in and out of the facility. So we actually think 7:00 PM is, is going to be a real successful, um, on both fronts. Ending a bit earlier, but also, um, you know, there's a lot of people that want to get their day over with. And, um, 90% of the shows that are in the building have opening acts, sometimes two opening acts. Sometimes people want to skip those, you know, acts anyway. So, uh, we think that it's a bit of a compromise, um, from eight, but I think it'll have a profound effect on, on one of the issues that you've been addressing.
And if you're drawing from somebody 90 miles away too, those, those individuals get home a little earlier.
True.
And actually, that's all, that's all I had, uh, out there because I only got my festival and, and, all right. Mr. Campbell?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Smith, I was, uh, happy to hear you were going to bring your staff tonight. And, uh, I wanted to, uh, compliment the job you did last year. Uh, it, it has to be, uh, something that exceeded all of our expectations. Also, I, I think a venue that's on I-70, easy in, easy out, uh, top-notch built and managed by a, a group of professionals that have over 25 years' experience is the secret to the success. It's a real gem for our community and it's something that all of us ought to embrace and be very proud of. But I wanted to thank all of you personally for the job you did. Uh, as Rob indicated, it was like, it was a 25-year venue on the first night. Thank you so much.
Thanks for allowing us to be involved.
Thank you very much. Appreciate, uh, all the answers that you were able to give tonight.
Right, uh... We can, uh, jump into some of the, uh, the financial, uh, stuff. We've, uh, we've got plenty of numbers that we'd like to update and share, but...
Actually, you know, I, I really was hoping to see the presentation so we could look at it before you actually gave it so that we could be prepared with, uh, some of the questions that we can. So if, uh, if you don't mind, I think it'd be more beneficial to hold off for that after we get a chance to publish it in the read-ahead. And then, uh, and then, uh, we can come more prepared to, to address some of the things that you're going to speak to.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's fine. That gives us some time because we, we wanted to share, but not necessarily distribute at this point because we want to, uh, you know, still verify and validate. I know Don and Jim, uh, uh, through last week and the past two days, pretty much solid working with Mr., with Rich. And we're talking hot dogs and everything. And, uh, that's an inside joke. But the, uh, I, I keep bringing up hot dogs. It's just an easy reference for me. But we, we do have the information and, uh, part of the audit process, um, we kind of were able to prematurely, but work with them to get all the finalized numbers. We certainly have data, but we wanted to make sure it's accurate. Uh, and, you know, we do have that data, um, and we just received all of it, uh, on, late last week and the last two days of going through. But we do have it prepared. We've got, uh, you know, numerous sheets, uh, and some slides, uh, if, if we want to. But that, uh, it's your pleasure. We, we, uh, we're happy to do that. We can, uh, package it up and, and attach it for, uh, for next discussion. That's fine.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay.
So we'll move on. Thank you, everyone. I, I thought that was very informative, so appreciate it. Uh, agriculture, animals, residential areas. Mr. Shaw?
Excellent. Thank you. Um, I had, uh, sent a request to our clerk of council to request to have this put on the agenda. During the past year and a half, two years, um, we have had, um, a citizen movement come through Huber Heights that, uh, unlike no other. Um, and their whole goal is to change our current code to allow chickens, um, in the backyards of our homes. Um, during that, uh, during that discussion, um, a lot of signatures were collected. A lot of individuals volunteered their time at different community events to educate the community. Um, there was presentations that occurred at our public library, um, discussions online. Um, and even just recently in the news, the city of Dayton is even jumping on this discussion. Um, we have, um, a representative here today from, uh, the CLUC initiative. Um, and, um, I have submitted some, some information to council in the read-ahead, um, which, um, some members of council will find this as information from prior years. The representative has also emailed some of the information to the new members of council that was supplied as well. Um, at this time, I'd like to call her up to the podium, uh, to, uh, kind of give, um, a small presentation of where she stands and what she would like us to move forward on. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Uh, my name's Sarah McBride, if I haven't met you yet. Um, I founded CLUC. Stands for Community Led Urban Chicken Keeping. Our goal is to bring the backyard chicken movement to Huber Heights. We, actually, the city council of Franklin County, which I modeled our ordinance after, the one I was hoping to get in there. They found that backyard chicken keeping is a productive, sustainable use of land that provides healthy, nutrient-dense eggs. And most, some people already that are kind of like, you know, what's, what's the big deal? Just buy your eggs at the store. Call it a day. But it's not that simple. All eggs are not created equal. Pastured eggs are transformative for our health. They are more nutrient-rich than their factory-farmed counterparts. They actually, people are catching on, so they're showing up at, in grocery stores, but they can cost you upwards of $6. And actually, I was just, um, in Florida on vacation and tried to buy some and they're $8 a dozen down there. Um, and they come from Austin, Texas. So you really have no idea if they were pastured, all the time, half the time, whatever. Um, and I don't know if you guys are interested in this, but this is kind of a mentally farmed, first pastured. So that kind of just shows, and I actually turned on like 95.7 on Saturday and was listening to Dr. Dyer on public radio. I don't know if you guys listen to him. He was just talking about all those other stuff in there that I didn't know about. Omegas, B9, full 8, and he was even saying that it's crucial for cognitive decline, dementia, all that kind of stuff. Helps keep the brain healthy. So anyway, so $6 to $8 a dozen and it'll probably rise because people are catching on. And that's not practical or affordable for those of us with large families or one-income families. Yet we want the opportunity to provide this for our families. So I have a family of seven and I stay home. We have, um, I try to do real food and local food when possible. But, you know, if we go through three dozen eggs a week, I don't have that kind of mind. Um, also, they're like cage-free, vegetarian-fed hens. That basically means nothing. The chickens are meant, they're supposed to roam outdoors, eat bugs, worms, et cetera. And the outcome is a more nutrient-dense egg. So the urban chicken movement is a trend that's spreading across America, both big cities and suburbs. It's not just California, New York, Portland. It's middle America too. Iowa, Wisconsin, Virginia, Illinois, et cetera. And even in Ohio, the upscale suburbs of Cincy and Columbus have already modified their codes a few years ago. Uh, examples are Blue Ash, Indian Hill, Upper Arlington, Dublin, Worthington, Granville Heights, um, and now Dayton, like you mentioned, is considering too. So I kind of checked and the ag code was, um, adopted in the 80s. I think that's right. And times have changed. This is the next generation. Most cities have already amended their codes to reflect that. People are taking charge of their health and care where their food comes from. Eco-health-conscious families are flocking to these areas that allow them to lead healthy lifestyles. All over, farm-to-table restaurants are popping up and organic groceries. Like I have to go 45 minutes to go to Whole Foods or Costco or Trader Joe's. And so we don't yet have those to attract young families, so we do have the advantage of larger lot sizes. Let's move Huber into a more sustainable, vibrant community, one chicken at a time. Did you want me to go over the history or does everybody kind of know where we're at with?
Um, if you could please, um, just for some of the members on council, I know, um, myself, um, Councilwoman Burge, um, are, are new to council. Um, and maybe some members of the audience as well that don't know the history of, of what you've tried to bring to, um, prior, um, city councils and committees.
Yeah, I was gonna ask also if anybody wanted to see the petition. I kind of just modified Franklin County, Ohio, Columbus and tailored it. I don't know if you want to pass it around. Well, we started out in 2014. We got chickens. Didn't know, didn't realize, you know, tried to look it up, didn't, didn't see. So we got four chickens. My husband built a chicken tractor. I just put pictures on here. Um, just to kind of show like how much room it takes up. Chickens really don't need much room. Like, I don't know the exact dimensions, but basically this is enough for four chickens. And then with the tractor, which you can now buy at Home Depot, Lowe's, Roulting, I mean, it's catching on just like mainstream stores too. just like mainstream stores too, um, you never let the chickens out. You can see I have a dog, so she never got a chance to eat the chickens. So, um, I don't know if you guys wanna see that or not, but, just to show that you really don't need that much space. You just move it around the yard, and then they get the grass, the bugs, whatever else they need. Yeah, I was gonna call my sister up to, she's a urban chicken owner for seven years, to kinda consult some of the common myths of, um, keeping urban chickens.
Hi, my name's Melissa Jasco, I live in Dayton, and we also had a very, you couldn't tell that chickens weren't legal, and now I think they're kinda cracking down until they decide whether or not they're gonna change the code. So until then, we had been keeping chickens for about five or six years in the city on like a tenth of an acre, very, you know, not a big backyard at all. But all of our neighbors knew, our chickens were very quiet, only laying hens, we're not talking about roosters, and less noisy than my neighbor's dogs. You know, I'll come home with my baby sleeping in my car, and then she wakes up because of all the dogs barking, but you couldn't hear our little hens clucking hardly at all, and I'm right next to them. Um, so I have a list here that I'll pass around, I'm just gonna name a couple, but I have, um, this was an essay that they broadcasted on NPR and the BBC for Seven Myths of Urban Chickens, and just debunking those. And, um, one of them that I think is really important was that property values will decrease, I think you hear that a lot. And, um, they actually found that seven out of ten cities on Forbes Magazine for the most desirable cities to live in, for two thousand and ten, allowed backyard chickens. So that was seven out of ten of those cities. And that often, these days, people wanna be eco-friendly and want sustainable food, so for younger families, it's actually, oh, wow, here, some realtors are even giving free coops away with the houses when they sell them. Um, 'cause they're cute and they're urban, you know, it's not like, you know, you have a dozen smelly hens all over, you have a couple clucking hens that can give you fresh eggs. Um, and waste and odor, the average forty-pound dog actually generates more waste than ten chickens, according to this. Um, so you know, many, many of our neighbors have dogs, have a forty-pound dog, um, or maybe even a couple. So the waste is really not an issue, and that if you keep it under control, and it even turns into compost. People spend a lot of money on good compost, but you could have it right in your backyard and even give it out to your neighbors. Um, and also, the chickens are noisy, that's the last one I'll go over, but of course, the council members, you can all see the others. Um, the fact is that laying hens at their loudest have about the same decibel level as human conversation, sixty-five decibels, and oftentimes, you could have a dog barking at more like ninety decibels. So, um, if you don't count roosters, which could be about as loud as that dog, they're not very noisy. And just like anything else, you could be a kind neighbor, and if they're being noisy, close them up in the coop. You know, it's not really, our hens would crow or cluck, not crow, if they laid an egg. You know, they're kinda like, "Bock, bock, bock," you know, just going around telling everybody, "I laid an egg." And it was maybe ten, thirty seconds probably was the longest any of ours ever kind of bragged like that. And then it was over. So, um, once again, I think much less noisy than dogs. So, like my sister, we have five kids, and it's just, we like to go to the farmer's market, we like to buy fresh, local stuff, but if you can have chickens, you know, a bag of chicken feed is cheaper, and you keep them under control, give your kids something to do to help and, you know, grow their food and, you know, learn all this great stuff, but I think it's something that Dayton, I'm gonna go talk to them too. I talked to the mayor this weekend, actually, and she's pretty excited about it. So hopefully, they can get on the bandwagon too, 'cause I think that's where we need to go.
Thank you for your time. Just a, a quick question, Sarah, if I may ask. When exactly was the first time that you brought this up to city council or a committee, um, to have this discussion?
Um, well, I got a violation, whatever you call it, from Don, and, um, I called Tony the next day and got it on the Public Service Committee, um, meeting, I don't know, for the next month. And I started a change.org, org petition, and it garnered over three hundred signatures in less than a week, so, um... And then we did three or four public ser- sorry, what was it, public services meetings, and, uh, had a lot of, you guys are all there, had a lot of supporters show up then. Then, um, Rob put out a chicken survey online, I think it was sixty-seven, four, thirty-three against on that, um, which is a bigger disparity than the income tax levy of the year, which was put on the ballot. Um, and then we had a panel discussion at the library, and then, uh, we, we kind of, I had a thousand signatures then, so we kinda put it out and asked them to just throw it on a ballot. I was like eight months pregnant with my fifth child and was like, "I don't have time to get seven hundred more signatures, let's just get this out." This is a good, um, I mean, how many people did you say voted for the energy ag thing?
Um, I, I know, I know the number was, was, was pretty close to that, uh, with the signatures, not only that you have there, but also the ongoing signatures that you had collected, and I know it was very close to that. Um, I, I wanna thank you for your presentation, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, no, but I think there were a few other residents that wanted to talk. I don't know if you were doing that, but I know.
Yeah, with, with your permission, um, could we listen to a couple residents, um, discuss this?
Uh, we should, but, uh...
Maybe do like a time limit? Yeah.
Uh, is everybody for, or is there anybody against? Okay, all right. Uh, I, I guess, I, I, I think, I think we've heard a lot of the fours, I think that it'd be good to hear and against.
Well, only several of you, Judy, Rob, Richard.
No, I mean, this was a, this was a four, every, this last, this last...
I mean, you guys have heard other residents speak, but some of you were not at, we just went to the Public Services and Safety Committee meeting, so...
Yes, but I, I'm, I'm saying we've just heard twenty-five minutes for four, wh- whatever.
Sounds good.
So, I'm sorry, what?
Um, this is from...
Oh, yeah, I'll make sure I, I'll make sure I, I'll do that too. So if, uh, the against, kinda, all right, go ahead, since you...
Uh, my name's Elizabeth Gitzinger, and I live on Handel Court. I'm not against raising chickens, I'm just against raising on them on less than one acre, um, that, which is our current law. Our properties are too close together, and I think it would be a nuisance to the neighbors and smelling and attracting unwanted animals and pests. I already have problems with unwanted animals. I can't have a decent garden without my vegetables disappearing. So if, if there's chickens around, I'll probably have more squirrels or something. Those living in covenants, they have their own laws, and they probably would not be covered by any changes to the zoning laws, but those of us who don't live in covenants will be affected, and that greatly affects us. I know you will say dogs can be quite smelly and noisy. I personally would like to see something done about the, how many people get to have, but that's another issue. Please, I'm asking you to do nothing about changing the present zoning law. Requirement regarding, uh, chickens in Huber Heights. If those who want to raise chickens getting enough signatures to put on a ballot, I hope the residents would vote it down, and I know I will be willing to do everything to see that it's defeated. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, well...
Seeing here today that there is a lot of people that wanna speak for and against the chickens, and I know this has been an ongoing discussion, would it be appropriate at this time to move this discussion to our planning commission for proper vetting and, and discussion, uh, to go through there?
Well, we, we could do that, uh, out there, but I think that, uh, Mr., the only person here that hasn't been involved in the discussion on the council is Ms. Burge, all right? So, pretty much everybody here knows what the issue is, and, uh, well, no, that's fine, we've had this, we've had this discussion ongoing for, for two years, basically. So the, the question is, do we want to do some of the things that we've talked about previously that couldn't be done under the other council? One, either change the ordinance or talk about changing the ordinance outright as, as a council. Two, seeking to, uh, put it on the ballot to let, to let, uh, the residents, uh, uh, make that decision, uh, themselves, okay? So I, I think, other than Ms. Burge, uh, you know, a- and let me read Glenn's. Glenn, uh, actually wasn't here, so he sent a email, let me just, uh, let me just put that out before we talk the rest of the way. And it says, uh, "Since I am not able to make tonight's meeting, can you read the following statement on my behalf when the agenda topic comes up? Through her petition efforts, Sarah McBride has clearly shown that there's a demand for backyard chickens, in Huber Heights, sorry. Therefore, I am in support of the Cluck Initiative. It has shown that locally raised foods provide healthy options at a reasonable price with local convenience, and I believe that our residents should have the ability to provide fresh, local foods to feed the families. That being said, I think that it is reasonable to bring this proposal to a future ballot with proper guidelines established to ensure protections for neighboring citizens." And, uh, that's from Councilman with Glenn Otto. All right, so, I, Ms. Burge, go ahead.
So one of the things that, if this does go to ballot, if this does go to ballot and even wins, if you live in a community that has covenants against it, those covenants will, will take precedence. Yeah.
Ms. Glenn, you should...
Actually, in the beginning of our city, all of it was covenant, and there were neighborhood associations, and over the years, they have gone by the wayside, which in years to come, maybe the new ones will too. But I'd like to ask our lawyer, with the new subdivisions that will not allow backyard animals, if someone in that area decided, if it was passed in, in Huber, they would be included, wouldn't they? Even though their covenant does not, 'cause if we have covenants that say we are not, uh, backyard chickens are allowed, um, what would they do? If they, if a person wanted to have chickens, could they just go ahead and have the chickens? Or would they, how, how does that work?
When you buy into a subdivision with covenants against backyard, uh, sheds, um, chickens, or other kinda farm animals, uh, uh, attached, a- anything that they would stick in there that, that's otherwise legally allowed, um, those govern how you live in that subdivision. And the city's zoning laws don't apply, and the city doesn't enforce those covenants, doesn't have anything to do with those covenants. So if, if, if you live in a, in a subdivision that, that does not permit chickens, uh, and you, uh, wanna, and you grow chickens, or you have chickens there, then the subdivision can enforce those covenants against you. The city simply doesn't have anything to do with it, they're out of it. It's not, it, it's a mutually exclusive kind of a thing.
So what would the, uh, what would that require for the, uh, subdivision to do? Would they have to hire a lawyer?
Yeah, the subdivision...
And make them abide by the covenant?
Typically, the subdivision will have a HOA, and, and the HOA, from time to time, uh, may not be able to collect all its, all of its, uh, all of its dues. And so typically, the HOA at least has an attorney's phone number, and they would call that attorney and say, "Hey..."
I was just curious, thank you, I just wondered how it worked, because in the beginning, the whole city was like that, but over the years, it's just gone by the wayside, so... I think it's very interesting, I think, um, to me, a ballot would make sense, because then everyone would have a say-so, at least the people that vote would have a say-so.
Yeah, go ahead. Stand up, speaking in the...
If our community, where I live, um, built, can wait for the homeowners association now to prevent that from happening in our neighborhood?
Yeah, sure, so, a, a subdivision, uh, of ten houses, uh, for instance, uh, has ten different pieces of property owned by ten different people, uh, and when they bought into that subdivision, all ten of those people bought in with the covenants that were in place, so they knew what they were getting, okay? If you have no covenants, or you, or, or you wanna add covenants, you don't necessarily have to form a homeowners association to add covenants, but you do have to get all ten people to sign off in order to have... You can get everybody in the subdivision to sign off, then you can do it.
Okay. You're welcome, Mr. Tyler.
The rights of the people to privately contract is pretty easy and clear. If residents in a neighborhood or residents in a subdivision want to privately enter into contract to have regulations on the colors of the mailboxes or the types of fences that are allowed, that's absolutely allowed. Why? Because the people have that ability, as long as it's not an improper regulation. There are certain things you can't restrict from coming into your neighborhood, whether you like to or not. Um, you can't say, "Only establish people forty and older in this community." There might be a, um, age discrimination law that prohibits you from doing that. But colors of mailboxes or fences, or whether or not you can have chickens is there. If this zoning regulation is changed, all that says is that the city will no longer prohibit you to do that. It gives permission. That being said, if a group of residents have privately contracted with these covenants and restrictions, those are imposed in that neighborhood, but you can't impose it in my neighborhood, 'cause we haven't privately agreed. So I think our, you were very much on the point there with, you can do that at any time. Now, there's, I'm sure, legal ramifications that neither I, as a councilman, nor our council can tell you, "Here's how you legally make it happen, you're gonna need your own lawyer for that one." But, the big thing there is that, will it apply to not only the homeowner that agreed with the neighbors, but can you make it apply to the person who buys it from the homeowner five years from now? And there are regulations on that, 'cause otherwise, I could come in and move into your neighborhood and say, "Hey, I, I've heard about this agreement, but I didn't agree to it." And it run, it's called running with the land, and basically, it's going to pass along with your sale. It's gonna be usually an deed. So I like that, but the reason why I like that, which is where I'm ultimately getting to my point as I meandered along, is, I don't meander, thank you, um, it's the people who spoke. The people who said, "This is what we as neighbors wanna do." What I have always said about this process is, is that I'm not saying, right here, right now, what my vote is or is not, 'cause again, I don't wanna do that, hear from this dais, and... What I would like to see, though, is for the people to be able to speak and do so at a ballot, so that we can have an official count and so that we can know. And quite frankly, what I'm hoping is, is that when that comes down, that both sides of the argument say, "You know what? Fair process, fair vote, now we know. In Huber Heights, we will approve this, or in Huber Heights, we will not approve this." This is the same thing, different subject matter. It, it's in front of us, and at that point, to be quite frank, if Sarah sees that it's a seventy-thirty against, then Sarah knows that she's gonna have to either buy one of the lots that are one acre or bigger or agriculturally zoned, or go somewhere else, and I look at that. If, however, it comes down seventy-thirty in favor, then we know that the public has said, our residents overall have said, this is some... said, our residents overall have said, "This is something that we want to allow." They're not saying that these covenants are invalid. They're just saying, "For purposes of city zoning, city ordinances, this is now allowed." So, I love what I'm hearing on both sides of this. I said this back when we talked about this at the old committee, is, "I want to hear from the public overall on something like this, because this is something big enough that this council should say, 'Let's hear from everyone who chooses to come out and vote.'" And in my mind, I see this, other than the fact that there's a state statute that helped what Mr. Lyons had proposed, I see this no different than asking the public about energy aggregation. Come out and vote, and tell us, your government, what you want us to do. But you all tell us, at the ballot box, what you want to do. That's my thought on this, and I am one hundred percent in favor of figuring out, other than making someone go through the Citizens Initiative process yet again, how can we get it to the ballot box, so that we can get a, quote, "final answer," and know what Huber Heights wants to do about this? So, that's my position.
But is it fair to, for the city to vote and tell me that my neighbors can have chickens or roaches or whatever they want?
Yes. Because, but otherwise, if the city votes against it and says, "No, no, 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 no," then Sarah knows she either has to not have her coop, or she's gotta move. At some point, zoning is about the public seeing what we want overall. Get your-
... generate an awful lot of chickens.
And, and that could happen too, and that's where the dogs perhaps get involved.
All right. So, so I hear that, uh, I hear that there probably isn't, uh, a, uh, consensus on council to discuss whether council wants to change the ordinance outright. Is there anybody that advocates having that discussion, where council?
I'm going to leave out the ballot.
Okay, Mr. Shaw.
I'm, I'm all for taking this directly to the ballot. Um, I think that this is not only what our citizens want, um, but I think this would finally put a final answer on this, and, um, and we can hear what the residents have to say in November.
Okay. Uh, uh, is there anybody on council that would like to speak against the idea of, uh, getting a ballot measure?
Getting what?
Or having a ballot measure? All right. And with that, I believe that, uh, we're gonna charge staff and, 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 uh, legal council to look into, uh, the ballot initiative as presented by council, instead of ballot initiative as presented by petition, to see how that's done. We'll start with that, and as such, we'll look for the language that was proposed, uh, previously, but then, the actual language that we intend to use, given that we can place it on the ballot as a council, which I believe we can, I've always believed that. Uh, so that we'll have that discussion, what the language will be, uh, after, uh, we've explored the, uh, ballot initiative. All right.
Yeah, I know that, uh, we've got a sample, um, but what they-
The first step would be to have council comfortable with the provisions that the
proposed change would be, get that set, and then follow up with, uh, sending that proposed change, uh, for consideration at the ballot. So, we'll work in getting that done.
But I, I know in our previous discussion on this, there was some discussion whether council could even request that it go on the ballot. I, I, I always believed that we could, but we need to settle that for sure, and, and, and have a serious, a serious answer for that particular question, before we worry about what language we could put on the ballot.
Sure.
But then, after that, we'll, we'll worry about what language, and when it has to be submitted, and all things go along with it. All right. After that, I think we move to carriage trails discussion.
Here it says there was no additional information provided by the staff. For carriage trails. For carriage trails, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to carriage trails discussion. Uh, Ms. Schommer, did you want to start?
Sure, sure will. Uh, I know there were a couple of, a couple of items that were, maybe not directly related to the particular topic, but I know had surrounding information. Uh, I know Scott has some, uh, some numbers. Uh, one of the questions that keeps reining in is, uh, is vacancies, uh, homes and such. Uh, citywide, I believe we have some fifty-six current vacant foreclosed homes.
Fifty-six, which is about point four percent of the city homes.
Okay. So, uh, due to some of the success of, like, the county court program and, and our, uh, land reutilization program that we have, uh, I think that we've maintained that at a pretty low rate comparing, um, compared to the number of homes, uh, that we have in the community. Now, let's not forget that as people drive through the streets of the community, uh, there are rental homes that may be between tenants that can be seen as vacant. Uh, that's not counted in that. These are actual vacant homes that are under foreclosure. Uh, zoning keeps an inventory of that, because we, uh, keep monitor for property maintenance, et cetera. So, uh, we had good ballot statistics right under our noses on, on that. Uh, so, so that's good. Um, regarding some of the other, uh, direct, you know, drilled down finances, I know Mr. Jones has detailed, comprehensive reports. I know we've had meetings with some, uh, residents here over the last couple of weeks. There's been a lot of inquiries, a lot of good questions, a lot of good dialogue. Uh, hopefully, we've provided the information that they need. Uh, hopefully, the information is out and, and in the packet, uh, and, uh, you know, considering and through our discussions. Uh, and I would just, if there are any lasting, direct, finance-related questions regarding this, uh, particular proposal, I will defer to Don, uh, with his, uh, spreadsheets that I know, Mr. Mayor, you've, you've seen it in detail and at length, and, uh, and others have as well, and, uh, that we've, uh, discussed and provided. So, um, that's the update. Um, we don't have any new information. Everything that was submitted at the first reading is the same. Uh, there, there are really no differences. Uh, the other, the only other, uh, uh, reigning question before we jump into the finances, uh, we had asked Mr. Conaway to go and, and verify the percentages, um, regarding previous amendments. We have that information as well. Mr. Conaway's, uh, finished that, and, and I believe has it tonight, if we need to, uh, to review that, if we want to follow up, or, uh, just submit it for review. Um, and with that, I'll turn it over to whomever, uh, the next reigning question's at. Mr. Shaw.
I know at a, excuse me, I'm sorry. I know at a previous meeting, um, the topic came up is, if the Seventeenth Amendment did not pass, would DEC pull out? And, um, I was wondering, uh, today, Mr. City Manager, if, uh, we had received a response on that.
Uh, in, in, in discussing that, uh, that is more of a, uh, a, a, a question legally for, for them to answer, make a, a decision on. Uh, we are not going to put them in a dilemma position to give an answer, yea or no, uh, yes or no for that. Um, you know, again, as far as what would happen to the relationship, or the, the partnership in on our side, uh, that's more of a legal question, uh, regarding our side of the agreement. I know that Mr. Jones and Allen have been reviewing some provisions within the agreement, and really, we took that question as, "Let's first examine our responsibilities and our obligations within that, and that, uh, whether, uh, is fair to move forward with an amendment, uh, what effect that has on us, not necessarily, uh, DEC at the time, because basically, we're in control of that." Um, and I know Mr. Jones has some information on that, um, and, and effectively, there's some provisions within the agreement that, that really do need to be addressed and, and discussed regarding that.
I don't want to talk for a DEC, because I, I don't have a, uh, any kind of letter or anything that says that they would, whatever they would do if we decide not to accept this, but there are provisions within this, with, within this contract that, uh, allow for-
Uh, I'm sorry. Are we getting a contract interpretation from finance? I mean, have you, okay, I mean, if we're interpreting a contract, have you asked?
I will, uh, I, I will disagree with, uh, your, uh, difficulty in having Don do it. He was involved in, in, in a lot of the development and writing, and, um, yourself commonly, you know, interpret contacts, contracts. Uh, so, Don's perspective from managing, uh, the commitments to the contract on our side, I'd like to let him kind of explain that first, and then have Allen maybe follow up on, on the legalese and, and the legal obligations. But I think it's, it's good insight to allow, uh, Don, who's really immersed in, in the numbers and, and managing the, the overall process, to, uh, to hear that, if, if you'd-
Yeah. Yeah, that, that'd be good, just, uh, the sections that are-
I, I'll, I'll, I'll point everyone here, and I, most of you have read this, or seen the agreements, but, again, just kind of the history, and, and I've talked to a couple of council members, and I've, and I've talked to, uh, various, even people within our staff, and, um, and just want to make sure that everybody's clear as to what they should be looking at, because there is some confusion, um, as to what documents are what. Uh, originally, there was a two thousand and seven agreement. That was the first one with DEC. That was subsequently restated and amended in September of two thousand and nine. So, that is the current agreement that we have right now. That agreement has then been subsequently amended sixteen times. So, that two thousand and nine, September twenty-first, two thousand and nine agreement is the applicable one. It replaced the two thousand and seven one, so, the difference between the two-
I, I'm that. Do we have that here in our read heads, so we can pull it up? And if not, can we get it on the board, so we can look at it?
Well, yeah, I, I know we can. Uh, the thing is, I'd like to be able to visualize what you're reading, so I can, well, I mean, when you, okay, all right, then. But here, I, I've got it here. Let me, uh, let me save it and put it on the, I've got the whole agreement, but I was just gonna point everyone to the applicable sections, we were talking about TIPS. Again, you read the whole thing, you might, I'm not gonna try and interpret it, but Section four, four, and Section eight are the main, four, four point four, and Section eight are the two, uh, particular areas, plus the definitions that talk about TIPS. There's all kinds of other things in this agreement, but, uh, those are the real areas that we need attention to, with regards to our obligations and, and their obligations, or their rights. Uh, let me save this real quick. Let me save it right here. Hold on. We also have a teasly successful carriage trailer. It doesn't have four, it's probably easier. Uh, Jackson's probably, I think it's here, so, let's see. For a shot. It's, uh, it's, I'm gonna work that, I don't know if it says, uh, definitions or something like that. Definitions right up, like, again, right there. This is my work document, so hopefully I haven't got too much stuff in, I haven't planned on sharing. Um, you know, it's not the tagged document, it's just a part that I think is kind of applicable for my, um, for my read heads. Hang on, let me, let me get a copy of it up here now. Okay, what I did, if you want, you can see, make me look, if you can. Anyhow, there are definitions, these are the definitions. I'll be glad to give a copy, just that everyone has. But Section four, it talks about, the Article four of the, of the Development Agreement, talks about the applicable, um, it's just down, just scrolling down. Six, four, yeah, keep on going, that's definition, so. Anyhow, the section, section that's applicable is Section four, and particularly, Section four point four E, um, talks about the issuance of, uh, public infrastructure improvements, and the identification, and there's a process there. The bottom line is, DEC has the right, according to the agreement, to ask us to fund certain public infrastructures. They have every right to do that. Uh, in that, in that request, they have to provide a description of what they want done, they have to provide anticipated costs, a scheduled construction, and whether the costs for the public, uh, infrastructure, uh, are for monies on deposit, or for monies that would be, the securities listed. And that's listed in two point, four point four E, Section one, which is that section there. So, that little process, that, that kind of starts the agreement. We've received that information, and that's why we're here talking about seventy to that. Uh, the, the ability to ask for funds, um, kind of goes in two separate tranches of money. Originally, in the agreement, it started in two thousand and nine, we issued one point two million with the public infrastructure. We provided another six hundred thousand of public infrastructure. Then we provided three point seven five million of public infrastructure. Uh, so that was the main agreement, and then we've since amended that. Uh, we've additional two hundred thousand, plus several other amendments, uh, that have gotten us up to the eleven point, uh, three nine six million of public infrastructure support. That agreement, uh, talks about a period of time from two thousand and nine to two thousand and seventeen. And it covers the agreement, it basically talks about making sure that they can come, they can ask, city council can yea or nay, and, uh, and provide funding based on the, on whatever's in there. Uh, after two thousand and seventeen, or two thousand and eighteen, it begins a different structure. And that structure basically, basically says that, um, whatever, we, we do a calculation, whatever that revenue is that we calculate, is coming in on an annual basis, we take out what debts, what debt would be, having to be paid for the prior issuances, that leaves us with a balance. Uh, we then can take out a debt coverage ratio, which basically leaves the city with some more, takes some more money off the table. And then, then we can take out some administrative costs, and that leaves some more money on the table. So, whatever's left after we take off enough money to pay for existing debt service, plus a coverage ratio, plus any administrative costs we might have in there, that number is available, and that's split one-third, two-thirds. DEC has the ability, we put it in a, what I want to call a DEC bucket, and then the other one-third goes into a city tip bucket. And then that money is available for their request, and they can use that money. Um, I'm not gonna say that they have, I don't want to make a legal opinion here, but it does say that, uh, the city would not, uh, have put, uh, unreasonably withhold approval. So, um, so basically, we're, and still in the pre-two thousand and eighteen bucket here, so I just want to make sure that everybody knows that. But when you're talking about the Seventeenth Amendment, the revenue that starts from the Seventeenth Amendment will not start until two thousand and eighteen. So, all the money that's going to be received by virtue of this point forward on, would be received in tax years two thousand and eighteen plus, which would then come under the, the two thousand and eighteen plus section of the formula, which calls for the one-third, two-thirds split after existing debt service. So, there's a couple of duances here, and I just want to make sure that everybody knew that, that that money would be available into the future, uh, after two thousand and eighteen, if it's not already dedicated to debt service. So, there is an evergreen type, for lack of a better term, uh, to this contract in terms of the money that is available. So basically, we're still in the pre-2018 bucket here, so I just want to make sure that everybody knows that. But when you're talking about the 17th Amendment, the revenue that starts from the 17th Amendment will not start until 2018. So all the money that's going to be received by virtue of this point forward on would be received in tax years 2018 plus, which would then come under the 2018 plus section of the formula, which calls for the one-third, two-third split after existing debt service. So there's a couple of duances here, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that, that that money would be available into the future after 2018, if it's not already dedicated to debt service. So, there is an evergreen type, for lack of a better term, to this contract in terms of the money that is available. Now, the terms and the rules of how that happens, I don't want to get into, we can discuss that, and, but I think it's, I'm trying not to make a legal opinion, but I think there, there's, there's, there's some questions as to whether or not we could deny that if it, well, it says we will not unreasonably deny it. I don't know what the definition of unreasonable is, and that's a legal opinion, but as long as they, they have four things they have to do, tell us they want to do it, tell us the section, 17.3, they told us how much they think it's going to be, about 950 something thousand dollars, they'd like 199,000 dollars worth of, worth of subsidy, TIP participation in the public infrastructure, and they'd like to begin work as soon as it's passed for the construction schedule. So, I think they've, from my standpoint, they've requested and they've submitted the information that we would require to move forward. But we are in that situation where we're still pre-17, but when we do the math, there's some formulas here that, in section 4.4E, that talk about the shilly shallow issue, the lesser of, or the greater of, and by virtue of the formula, they would be, you know, we could go through the numbers, and they would be entitled to that money. However, I think still, the question is, can the council still say no, and I think that, I think they can't, but again, that's a legal question as to whether or not, once they meet all the requirements, what is unreasonable. And so, the point I wanted to get at is that even though we're talking about a pre-2018 approval here, the monies that are going to be generated by the 17th Amendment would come in in 18 plus, so the revenue received by, anything, these 25 lots would be received in 18, 19, 20, 21, and it would become available based on that particular formula versus the pre-17, or the 17 prior formula, which is a little bit more restricted. That's all I wanted to say. Just throw it out there, I know it's got a bunch of heads spinning-
18, it's the 18. Formula, is that section eight?
That is section eight, yes. First 18 formula says disposition of eligible TIP fund receipts following calendar year 2017, right there. And that's the section that talks about how TIP funds will be disposed of or used in 2018 on. And the formula basically says, first, we take into account, I don't know if you can read it right there, the receipts are going to come in, I can pull it out, yeah, it's hard to see. We take the money that comes in from accounting, in TIP money, we take it in, the city takes it, deposits it. We have to pay for certain things. We would have a set aside for debt service, one of which is a CIB loan, second is any of this stuff that we've already issued, the third would be the, the administrative fees, and the, and the second one includes the debt service set aside, which is debt service, but we also get a, a coverage set aside, which means we can add about 20% to that number. And the fourth is where it gets split, in any particular year, it's one-third, two-thirds, whatever's left after that. And that's how these monies would be split unless we issue securities or have an agreement to issue this already. So in other words, if we do the 17th Amendment, it would come under the set aside portion of section two, and it'd come off the top with a, with a 20% rider on top of it. If we don't, then that money is no longer set aside, it goes down to the bottom of the formula, and it still gets split, two-thirds, one-third, and the two-thirds would be on this, on this amount would be about $20,000 a year, and the debt service on this is about 16,000, so that, that's kind of the numbers. I'd be glad to, I hadn't planned on talking too much about that, and the fact I wanted to point out the fact that there are two formulas, and the fact that the money that's going to be received on the 17th Amendment, if, if it occur, if, if the buildings are built, and the lots are built, these 25 lots are built today, and we don't subsidize them, the money that comes in, that they generate in 2018 would then be available to, to the developer to use for that and prior, and not only that particular, uh, public infrastructure, future public infrastructure and prior public infrastructure as well. So, that's my opinion. So that's a, that's, that's the point I wanted to get at.
I don't think it, any of you to- Look and read it and try and interpret now, too, so, but it'll, it'll be actually good, yeah.
Well, the main thing is that we had some confusion between the special assessments and what was paying off the special assessments in terms of the Carriage Hills Boulevard, and how that money was going to be used, and that TIP money, and the confusion as to, you know, what that debt was, and then the confusion, then, then there's another special assessments, which we also, as part of the 17th Amendment, we have another special assessment request as well, that's an additional special assessment. And then there's the TIP money request, so there's two or three types of things covered in this agreement, and if you try and read through it, you kind of, you can get lost pretty quick, and I wanted to make sure that, that, that number one, you're reading the live agreement, because some folks are reading 2017, and number two, that you have the most current copy of the, of the agreement, and you, and you really paid attention to the sections that really discuss what we're talking about.
And just one of the things that I mean, I'll look at, or I hope my lawyer will look at, whether those TIP dollars would be applicable to the service payments, as it appears to be here, which would include the Carriage Hills Boulevard debt or not, but about sitting down and read it and having the lawyer read it, I don't know. I think there's- Right, right.
I'm just responding to at least three questions that I've had with regards to the agreement. Yeah, because if you don't get to that point-
Right.
All right.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm working very hard to catch up on this issue. I attended Carriage Hills meeting yesterday, and I thank you for inviting me, it was very informative, and Janelle and I spent two and a half hours with Mr. Jones yesterday, trying to understand TIP. It was like drinking from a fire hose, but I, I'm feeling very comfortable with, with what I've learned, I've made some notes, gave them back to, to Mr. Jones to ask him whether my interpretation was right. But I have a question for my fellow council members, I don't understand why we would not do this.
Ms. Jones? Two-part answer. First is, do we do this at all? One question that I've asked in years past that I never got a satisfactory answer, and therefore I voted the way I voted, was, why do we have to keep subsidizing this now that we are many, many years down the road, pun intended? Why are we subsidizing a development in this one area, and we don't subsidize any other development in any other part of the city that I'm aware of? Why are we spending that money there when we could use the TIP proceeds that are available to us to make other improvements? And I'm not saying that we have to, but I'm asking, why do we invest? Because we are essentially a venture debt investor in this project. And for me to have to report back to my board of directors, the ones that I answer directly to next year, why are we doing this more? I don't question that agreement being done back in 2000, and what was it, 2009, when we were what, in the midst of the bad bubble burst for real estate? And whether or not realtors could fund infrastructure or not, and if so, what did they need to do to do that? But it's now 2016, and I took the opportunity Tuesday of last week to talk to a person who is involved in the Home Builders Association, and I asked him a series of questions relating to this, and part of it is that the housing development industry in 2016 is a little different than what it was in 2009, and for almost all, can't say all, but almost all, it's improved. And the availability of funds for a private investor to borrow against and build is more available now than what it was in 2009.
But we set this up as a TIP, which your private developer most likely did not. So we set up an agreement with DEC-
No, no, there's TIP money there, but the TIP was actually done, if I understand correctly, back in '05, before this agreement was done. Am I wrong on that? Someone?
Right, but we've had, what, 16 amendments to this up to now, and they've lived up to all their agreements, have they not?
And so have we. My question, Nancy, is whether or not it's right to keep going now. That was my first point. My second point is that maybe we do keep going? I can be convinced that we do this subsidy, but at that point, then, the question is, is the amount that DEC has asked us to subsidize the right amount? We are venture debt investors in their private business. That's the public-private partnership that's going on here. They have, thanks to Donnie's slide from the last time, seven, phase three is 79.1% DEC, 20.8% city. And if we are truly in a public-private partnership, one thing we have the, I think, reasonable ability to do is to ask, is this dollar amount, is this subsidy, the appropriate percentage? Or should we, as the board of directors, who look for our stockholders, is the appropriate percentage perhaps less than this? Should we be at 10%? Should there be a sliding scale that as things move forward, it goes from, maybe it was 50, 60%? I haven't done the numbers, but that's going to be a question. I'm asking the numbers, guys, to do and present to me in writing before meeting, instead of having a agreement that I haven't been provided yet, but my request, my request is that we find out whether or not this has been 50 to 40 to 30, did it jump back up to 50 at some point? I don't know. We need that information. Again, the person I talked to at the Home Builders Association of Dayton, when I was talking about this, I sat there and I said, can you imagine any scenario where the public investor, the minority investor on this, is pretty much at a arbitrary percentage? Or should the percentage be something that is known that, okay, in year one, it may be 60% because in year one, it was 2009, and it was kind of hard to get money from banks? But then, year two, it should be no greater than 50%, year three, no greater than. And here we are now, seven years in, and should the percentage be at 20% or 10%? With an understanding that perhaps DEC and the city knows that by the time they get to full build out, the last couple of sections is 100% private, 0% city. I'm not saying that has to be it, but that number I want to know, and whether or not we're looking at that, or do we have numbers that appear to be fluctuating? In the 12th Amendment, to repeat, it was 34 lots, $457,000 at $13,441 per lot. 13th Amendment, 31 lots, $420,000 at $13,548. Now, I've heard someone say, well, there's size and all that. My response to that is, again, we should not necessarily, as a venture debt investor, have to increase a dollar amount versus a percentage amount. We can do 10% of whatever DEC wants to do, I'm using it as an example. If DEC says they want to spend $500,000, fine, we'll fund 10% of that. If they say they want to do a million dollars, we'll fund 10%. And what I'd like to know, and I'd like an opinion as part of this discussion, is, as we're looking at all of this, do we, the city, have the authority by contract to negotiate the percentage? And if so, if we counter, they're, just in this example, they've said 80/20. If we counter and say 90/10, or 85/15, why do we have the authority to do that? And two, if we do, why don't we? Because the amount that this TIP generates for our things, the numbers that you've got in the other slides here, Donnie, which were very helpful information-wise, but if an investor invests less money, less capital out of my pocketbook, and yet the return on investment's going to be about the same, then that's a good investment. If I have to invest more money to get the same return on investment, that's a bad investment.
Return on investment is?
If, I'm sorry, did I, if we, if we, if we have to invest X dollars, and we get more or less of a return on that investment, the risk reward factors in. Some may not, I like to watch that little show called Shark Tank, and watch the investors talk about their money in play, and is it worth the risk of investing? So, Nancy, my answer is twofold. One, why are we doing it at all? The answer is, I'm not sure. As of last amendment, I wasn't convinced it was the right thing to do.
Well, your issue seems to be also with the percentage, so probably the number one question we need to have answered is whether that percentage can be negotiated. The second part of it is that, it appears to me from what I've been told, that if we do not go forward with this amendment, then the city is going to have to pay the $650,000 that DEC pays every year. I mean, are we ready?
Why do we, why? That, that's a very important legal opinion that I'd like to know why, I'd like to know what legal document makes this city pay a debt that someone else owes. And that's going to bring up an interesting question for me, because here's my other thing, if we're a venture debt, like we are, and if this is a partnership and an agreement, then what I'd like to know is, our books are online, you know what assets we own, you know what debts we have. I would like to respectfully ask that the other partner in the private-public partnership provide to me for review, and any other council member, their books for the last five years, because as an investor, I think I should know what assets they own, what debts they have, what obligations, because if this is going to be, if they have no assets- Because if this is going to be, if they have no assets and all debt, that is a very bad thing to do as an investor. Now, if they've got assets that are in play, in terms of they own them and they are free and clear, fine. I'm not trying to be draconian on this. But I approach this, like I have said many times already, I am approaching this as a businessman who speaks for my investors, my board of, not board, my stockholders, and is this the appropriate thing to do? So Nancy, that's my answer, is, is the percentage the right percentage? And is this an appropriate investment at this time in this stage or not? If they pull out, do we have another developer that might want to come in and do this? And if they pull out, do they default on a loan that they assumed? And legally, if they default on that loan, and yet somehow it comes back to us, then why are we in business with someone who's going to essentially close up shop and walk away?
Aren't those terms defined in the contract?
Do you know? I don't know the answer to that yet. I'd like to know. Please, and thank you.
The, the city, the, the city pays the debt service on the loans that we, we have. That, that service paid through the revenues that we get. So to assume that we're going to pick up the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars or whatever it is that is made by DEC now, is an assumption that they walk away from the property. So we heard tonight that they, they've not made that, and won't make that.
They won't make what?
That assertion that they're going to walk away if we don't.
Well, I'm not asking whether they walk away. I'm asking, if, if we assume that, you, you're saying that they're not going, that the city is not going to assume that debt? Do we know that for sure?
The city already owes that debt. The city, the city owes all the debt.
Yes, okay. But DEC is paying a portion of it.
DEC pays their taxes, and so we, we pay that debt by the, by the taxes and special assessments that, that we have on that. All right? So we earlier asked a question if DEC was going to walk away if we don't provide this particular supplement? And the answer to that was, we don't know what DEC's going to do, which is the right answer. All right? So if they happen to walk away, we still have to make our debt service payment. All right? Because it's our debt service payment. But that doesn't assume that, that we're going to pick it all up, or there are.
So what happens, where does the other six hundred and fifty thousand come from that they're paying right now?
That, okay, there, there's different ways, there's different ways that that could be, that could be paid. All right? All right? There's, you know, because, because, you know, they have land out there, that land could be, uh, sold, you know? I mean, and any other way that, that you don't get your tax payments. All right? It, it functions the same way.
This is still very hypothetical. I'm looking for something that's actual, you know?
Yeah, well, the, the first hypothetical is that they're not going to make their, their payment. That's the first hypothetical, that's where we're starting.
Well, maybe it's not. I mean, if they, if they come and walk away.
Then we can go with other hypotheticals.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm really looking for some, not a hard fact of whether they're going to walk away, a hard fact on if they walked away, what would happen to our budget? You know, what, what additional costs we would incur that would have.
That's, that's the discussion that we're ha, we have to, that's the discussion we're having. I mean, that's the whole point to this discussion.
Right, right.
All right? So, so it, it's a risk thing. I mean, they could be coming up here and say, we need fifty thousand dollars of that, or we'll walk away. Or they could be saying, and we could be saying, it's four thousand or, or zero, okay? All right? So yes, we, we, right now, uh, there's special assessments that are being paid, and, and they have to be paid in order to make the debt service. But, I mean, that's just part of the, part of the issue. The question that you ra, raised at the beginning was the important question. It's like, why would you do this, or why wouldn't you do this? Well, the reason why you wouldn't do it is because it puts three hundred thousand dollars more in the city's budget coffers if you don't do it. All right? It's the hundred thou, or two hundred thousand dollars that we would put out, uh, again, the interest, so over whatever it is, twenty years, you end up with three hundred thousand dollars more dollars to do three hundred thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars more stuff in the city. The question is, if you spend that money, is it to the city's benefit? And that's the discussion that we're having, uh, right here. And we saw some of, uh, the, here in the presentation, that, uh, we have a whole bunch of ways that, uh, if we put these houses in, that they would benefit the city. And the other discussion that we have is, why isn't some of the negatives in here as well? But you see, there's some, there's some benefit to spending the three hundred thousand dollars. But the, the question is, if we don't spend it, then we get to, then we get to keep it, and we get to use it for other things.
But if you spend it, and you, you run the, the original plan out for the TIF, at the end of the TIF, then, then we're going to yield a lot more money that we can roll back into the TIF district.
No, that, no, well, the que, the thing is though, if you don't spend it, and you still build the houses, you get all that benefit anyway, without spending the money. Okay? So, well, it is true. It is true. If you don't, if you don't, if you don't spend any money in these houses, and they still send, and they still build the houses at about the same rate, then you get exactly the same benefit that's, that's put out in here.
Who's going to build the houses at the same rate?
Well, I don't know. We just saw in the paper today that you had a fifteen, you had a fifteen percent increase in home sales in February throughout the area.
Well, it's different in building homes than getting a developer to come in. It's far more difficult.
We have a developer that, that can come in. So if they're increasing, if, if there's a fifteen percent increase in home demand in this area right now, who's not to say that you, they're not going to be able to build those houses for essentially the increase in price and still sell them? All right? If your, if your, if your newspaper articles are telling you that we're building houses hand over foot in this area and can't sell them how, how, fast enough, how, why would we not take that into consideration in the amount of supplement that we decide that we're going to give?
I realize the time was different when DEC came in, that we were in a, in a, in a bad economy. But that's really, really taking of an optimistic view that if DEC pulled out and another developer would move right in.
Well, I'm not even taking that view. All right? I'm, I.
Well, who's going to continue to build?
If there's fifteen percent, in, in today's paper, it said, demand in February was up fifteen percent. Okay? If demand is high, why would the sales end, stop in, in carriage trails? Why would they stop?
Because you don't have a developer anymore.
Why would they, why would they stop developing if they're selling houses?
Because we can't afford to keep paying the rest of the debt.
Right? If you're selling houses, if, if the area here says that we're selling houses.
And the answer to that question is, because of the Parkway assessment. It's the four hundred thousand dollars a year. It, it prevents a developer from conventionally building. I mean, if, if you didn't have the Parkway debt, a conventional deal might have worked in carriage trails. But in order for the city to relieve itself of the thirteen million dollars and debt taking, DEC taking that on, it required a structure of a different deal. And I didn't mean to interrupt early when I stood up, but I, I didn't answer Richard's question purposely, because as we started to, to look back through the agreement, we realized it's much deeper than what we should say we would do. We don't know what we would do. One thing that, that I would like to clear up though, after this amount of conversation, is could we all agree that we both have obligations under this thing? Because I've heard people told, Mayor Bayou, that there are no continuing city obligations. At the last meeting, Richard, you've written, that you've, you've read the documents and there are no obligations. Well, we've talked about tonight, and certainly will defer to Alan for legal opinion. But this, this amended and restated agreement is chock full of ninety-six pages of things that obligate, uh, the city's commitment to the deal and DEC's commitment to the deal. The city felt in this agreement that it put so much into it, that it made DEC go and produce five million dollars in, in equity. So DEC had to go raise five million dollars to prove that we were a financial partner. So I think, Tyler, when you get a chance to read this, you'll see that it's written more like partnership than one of us being the developer and the other person being, you know, venture investor in, in the thing. There's two ways that DEC can request money in this agreement. And Donnie, you know, started with the second one, really. And if you want to, we didn't use the default formula, we've never used the default formula. So if you read this, there's a default formula that will spell out a, an amount for two thousand and fourteen through two thousand and seventeen. So you could take the year two thousand and sixteen, and you could calculate in writing what the deal should be this year. And it has to be met by DEC producing the committed to building permits from last year. So in October of last year, you do a check on this thing, and if we met what we were supposed to do through October of last year, this thing says that for the calendar years two thousand and fourteen through seventeen, an amount equal to the lesser of three million seven fifty, or then you go into a calculation of the value of the houses and so forth. That, that's the default agreement under here. We've never used it. There's also an extraordinary condition agreement. And we started using that from day one, because it's how we facilitated the million six that Donnie talked about, and the three point seven five. Because they didn't fit any particular, uh, formula that was written into the agreement, but they fit the extra, extraordinary conditions that were provided for in lieu thereof. So as we've come back over the years, we've never reverted to the default formula, hence a set percentage. In the default formula, the percentage is fifty percent. So if you read down through there, one of the checks is that the amount won't be in excess to fifty percent of the public improvement cost. So if we would go away, or do away with the extraordinary request that we've been making, and just use the default formula, we calculate something based on a maximum fifty percent. The way we've been doing it, we haven't used fifty percent. And I, I do have the, those numbers for you, Tyler, and I'll, I'll provide those for you this evening. Uh, I went back to the eleventh amendment, it was thirty percent, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-two. The percentage on this one that we're working on right now is actually eighteen percent of the project, twenty percent of the public total. So those will, and I'll give these to Bonnie when I'm done. She can pass them out for you guys to look at.
Nancy, if I can interrupt, procedural question.
Yeah.
Is there a willingness on your behalf to negotiate whether or not the twenty percent should be less than that? Or is there a particular reason that the numbers have been? You said some were thirty-six, some were thirty-five, and I appreciate that the default or normal was that. Is there a particular reason why the numbers? And would you be willing to negotiate those percentages with this city? And I'm not asking you for.
No, I'm not the managing partner, I can't speak on behalf of DEC. But I think we've done that over the years, because, uh, in this partnership, we started out with the city really putting in a hundred percent to get the thing started. Then as we came away from there, I went back to the eleventh amendment, because that's, you had mentioned the eleventh or twelfth. I believe we went like from a hundred percent, I think we went to fifty percent, then we started, we just kind of honed in on about a third. And when we did our original calculations based on a budget, these may have been at thirty-three percent. And then in the final analysis with all costs in, they ended up being thirty-five or thirty. But we kind of used that, that one third. Honestly, in, in the seventeenth amendment, we just, we looked at it and said, what, you know, what can we just squeeze this thing down to? So that, the last thing we wanted to do was put a number out that scared everybody. You know, so, okay, let, it was go, let's go at twenty percent and, you know, get everybody comfortable that this thing still works and still produces. There's no restriction in the extraordinary project request for a percentage. It's, it defers to an annual amount that you'd have to cap it at. Is that correct? That you understand?
Yeah.
Yeah. So there's an annual amount that you would base. So I mean, we could ask for a hundred percent of one deal, and do the next one for zero, and be in compliance with that. If we used the default formula, we'd have to cap everything at fifty percent. So I think we've demonstrated a willingness to talk about percentages, and everybody felt comfortable at thirty percent, because that was, and I think we got there, you just jump in anytime.
What's the right number, that's the question. But that's why I was pointing you to the two thousand and eighteen, when this money's going to come in. That's kind of my mindset, is what should be the cap? And it should be, you know, if, if we don't do anything, the agreement's going to give them two-thirds of the TIF money after two thousand and eighteen. So whatever they build now, they're going to get it in two thousand and eighteen. Two-thirds of this TIF money that doesn't exist right now. So if nothing's built, this money doesn't exist. But if it gets built, as the way we projected, two-thirds of that is nineteen thousand dollars a year. So nineteen thousand dollars a year is what they'll get anyway. Debt service on a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars is sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars. So it's pretty close to the two-thirds that they would be in type two anyway, but it's actually less than the two-thirds. So that's kind of when, in terms of where we're going, yeah, I think we do want to wiggle down. There's no doubt about it. The lower the number, the better. But, you know, if we don't do anything, they're going to get, they're going to get two-thirds anyway. Based on the form, I say like, you know, but right now, it's covered. So anything new, which this would be new, this money doesn't exist, you can't take it, put it in the bank, if they don't build twenty-five lots, we're not getting anything, uh, nobody gets anything. So the, anyway, that's, that's an answer to you as to why this number is, is a decent number in terms of the percentage. It's a, it's, it equates to slightly less than two-thirds of the, of the TIF money, which is approximately the county's portion of the TIF. So this thing, it's the money we get from the county that we wouldn't get anywhere, that we're putting back. And we're not investing in debt, you know, it is an investment, I don't want to get into semantics, but we're not investing in debt as a, as a partnership. We're not, we don't have any ownership of them. We're investing in infrastructure. And it's a deal-by-deal basis. This deal is separate than the previous deal, because those are sunk costs, they're already out there. And then producing income, uh, and yeah, maybe we could have done better, uh, maybe we could have done worse. But, you know, in terms of, you know, one of the other questions, risk? What are we risking? And the mayor's all over this. And it really boils down to it, uh, the risk is, you're right, if, if we think they're going to build these houses anyway, why would we want to put any money in? Well, we wouldn't want to, but we'd still be required to later on, uh, after two thousand and eighteen. So that's one thing. But, but if we, how sure are we that's going to happen? And if it doesn't happen at the speed with which we believe it will happen, in other words, we're kind of guaranteed that it's going to happen. I wouldn't say guaranteed, I wouldn't guarantee it. But the agreement that we're talking about, the seventeenth amendment, is if we produce one hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars with this subsidy, they will put in X amount of money, and they will produce twenty-five lots, which they have under contract, I believe, through, um, their, their owner. You know, when they're available, Everness Homes will, will take those lots, and they have every intention of building homes there. So we believe that the buildout between, we're looking at an eighteen to, you know, three-year buildout, in terms of the staggered in in our calculations. So we believe that it'll have, on the twenty-five lots, historically, twenty-three homes within three years. And that's how we come up with these numbers, just set like this. So we're not even a hundred percent buildout, we're taking the percentage off the top. So we end up wherever we're at. But the money doesn't come in until after two thousand and eighteen. So if they build them today, they sell them today, they hit the taxes, by the time the money starts flowing because of the, the way TIF works, it's going to come under the new formula anyway.
And just to expand on that a little bit, one of the reasons why would we have an amended and restated? and restated agreement is because the way the deal was originally structured, where it was back-end loaded, Deck always got money at the back end of this deal. That's, that was like, early on, that was part of the deal. The other thing you'll see when you look through here is it's expeditious development of the project to benefit both the city and the TIF. So this was rewritten to change the deal to expedite it. So what we did was instead of, I mean, if that 2/3 that Donnie's talking about that would go to Deck in 2018 is committed because you front-ended it and have debt against it, then it doesn't go to Deck. Then you get it. So this deal was written so that we could take that back-end money and put it into the development to make the development happen sooner. And when you get a chance to go through here, you'll see that that's what the focus of this is, to make this happen as expeditiously as possible.
The value of that, I think I'm going to beat this dead horse, but the value of that is the TIF is a 30-year TIF and it's going to run out. So if we can accelerate the build out even by a year or two, that's one or two years of extra money that we receive at the back end. And it's not the front end that we're picking up, it's the back end, the more valuable years. Because, you know, if we, if nothing happens here and it gets built anyway, but maybe it gets built two years later and not as quick and not as, as we, as this would accelerate the deal, then we're better off accelerating it than waiting two years and not putting any money into it. In terms of a break even.
When we originally changed the agreement, it was to do just that. And it was to accelerate the build out of the project. What we saw Deck as in relationship to being a good partner was they were not only willing to make those payments on the Parkway, they were willing to assume the maintenance. Those costs are astronomical. And they had little income to show for it. And they accepted to back-end load this. And that's what you're talking about in regard to 2018, correct?
Yes. We wanted to subsidize it at the beginning and then have a way of moving forward after about the first seven years.
And the development agreement made the most sense by giving them incentives to go as fast as they can so we could capture as many of those 30 years as we possibly could. And we wrote it in such a way that it benefited them as well. Because every time you sell a lot, you're reducing the amount of payment and maintenance.
Yeah.
Because those are transferred over to the property owners, correct? And then we're growing our city at the same time. And the money that we're spending and have spent has went into public infrastructure. And Jim, would that be somewhere on our balance sheet? The curbs, the streets, the sidewalks? Those are assets of ours?
We do a hard asset allocation sheet for each TIF project. So when I'm finished, one of the things with the project, what I'd do is get to Jim is how many feet of water pipe we put in, how many feet of sanitary sewer, how many feet of storm, millennial feet of streets and curbs. We all, we look at the amount of asset that was produced by the TIF, by each TIF project.
And I don't want to argue or make enemies here tonight, but just listening to Ken Conaway reminds me why they were the correct partner. I mean, it's outstanding. I mean, they know the product. They know the development. And, and an additional item that I would bring up, Mayor, is we've made a commitment to a developer. And I bet the development community, Alan Schaefer, if I could get your attention as a real estate attorney, I bet the development community is watching us. Is watching Uber Heights. And watching to see if we're honoring our commitments.
That's, there's no question about that.
And that's going to be interpreted in a reputation. And I hope that we continue the reputation that we've been so happy to have, that we can continue to build Uber Heights out, both north and south.
Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Conaway, thank you for addressing us here this evening. I just have three things for you.
Okay.
First off, because this is my first time on this dais and addressing this issue. Just so I'm completely clear and to make sure that, you know, we show the mutual respect, what is exactly your role and title with Deck?
I'm an employee and a vice president of construction.
Thank you. My second question would be, you stated that, and I, and I've been having some email correspondence with some Carriage Trails residents. And as you stated in there, that as I, as I put it in there, according to my research, there are no legal ramifications. After that, I put, is there a written legal opinion that I believe is needed? And I said, yes. I would definitely ask our law director, and I believe he's got a copy of that agreement, to provide that to us. My third and final thing is, at one of the previous meetings, the discussion was, would Deck pull out? Your comment to me was, I will bring back that answer. Do you have that answer for us this evening?
No, I don't. And that's, I came to the podium tonight prepared to give you the percentage, give you the percentages that I promised and explain to you that we think, when I started to look at this, that's not a question that should be answered between council and me as a spokesperson, even delivering a letter. It's far too meticulous. 96 pages in this agreement alone. I talked to George Jenkins, who's a managing member, about your question. And he, he liked, he can't write a short letter, but he would have put 10 pages together that we'd had to run by, you know, Alan to interpret. And really what you're asking me to do is dig into this contract and, because I think I, I think I reworded it and said, your question was if the city reneges on its agreement. Well, reneging on the agreement is huge and it's many faceted in here. So that's not, what would we do if the city? The first thing we'll do is continue to do what we've done since 2007 and work with the city to figure out what went wrong. We think that we've held up our end of this agreement, honored all of our obligations. Somebody referred to us pulling out as a threat. We're not threatening anything. We're, you know, that's, I think two years ago, I stood at the podium and I said Carriage Trails would fail if we lost the support of the city. And since then, I've said failure is, means different things to different people. But the support of the city allows us, and has allowed us from the beginning, to first of all, take on all of the maintenance. And I never saw a budget at the time, but Kathy Armacida told me that the city was spending $200,000 a year taking care of Carriage Trails Parkway when it was closed. So we took that over, even when the Parkway was closed. We took over the maintenance of the Parkway. We continue to do that. We have a 100-acre shared green space. It's public access easement. It was part of our deal with the city that we maintain. And we've taken on the Parkway debt, that we lay off $275 approximately per home as we sell a home. But until the deals come together, all the homes are sold, all the multifamily units are built, I believe our debt was like $360,000 last year alone, which is now billed through our real estate taxes. So when people start to think about these things that could happen, yeah, I mean, a default on the mortgage would cause the real estate taxes not to get paid, or a default on the real estate tax, I'm not sure that we pay them through our mortgage or not. Probably don't. But that, we, we don't, none of us want to probably go down the chain of trying to think of what could, what all could go wrong here. I mean, I'd like to see us look at the agreement, understand that we were in a partnership with each other, understand that we feel as if we've honored our, our end of the partnership and, and hope that the city sees a way to continue this.
And Mr. Conaway, the twofold reason, the reason I presented that question is because it wasn't just a question that was on my mind. It's a question that's on many minds of the residents that are not only sitting behind you, but watching at home and vote in the city and live in the city and own houses in the city. That's the reason I asked that question. My second thing is, and you, feel free to, you know, tell me if you don't feel comfortable answering this, but in your honest opinion, as a vice president of construction, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If the city does not move forward and, and pay the subsidy fund, is it, in your opinion, that without those funds, lots cannot be constructed and Ryan Homes would not be able to build homes? Or Inverness?
Let, let me broaden it a little bit, okay? Because I don't know if $200,000 isn't, isn't going to make or break our relationship. But if the city now, if the council demonstrates that they have a change of heart about their, the city's continued participation in this agreement, Deck can't afford to continue to develop lots and Carriage Trails. I mean, I, I heard last week the mayor had somewhat assessed or deduced maybe what we sell a lot for. I challenge all of you to check what that real, that number really is. We're market driven. The only, the only reason Carriage Trails is selling 100, 120 homes a year is because it's affordable. I mean, if we were priced at anything over market, I mean, we don't have swimming pools, we don't have a lot of neat stuff we're selling. We're selling a good value for our home. We're selling 120 acres of green space. We're selling city services, so you've got city fire, city police. So we've got a great package to sell. But you can't sell it if it's not market driven.
So, and let me make sure that I understood that correctly. My question was, without the city providing the subsidy, as a vice president of construction, in your opinion, would lots still be able to be constructed? And would Inverness and Ryan Homes still continue to build homes, in your opinion?
And my answer to that was no.
No, okay.
And I, and I explained why.
Sure. No, and I, again, I appreciate that. And, and that is, you know, I mean, those are fair statements, so it is market driven. I've looked at the numbers. I understand the numbers. I understood the numbers a year and a half ago when I was running for the seat during the campaign. I explained these numbers in several of my forums that I held. My only contentious issue is, and I, and I did submit this information to one of the Carriage Trails residents, and I'm not going to put their name out here today. But one of the things that my constituents are coming to me and saying is in 1999, the city had a population of 38,686. That's a fact. In 2010, according to the US Census, the city had a population of 38,101. That's a loss of 585 residents. And the reason I stopped at 2010, this amended agreement was done in 2009. In the same census report, our housing stock, and this is for Montgomery County and Miami County, in 2000, I'm sorry, in 1999, we had 14,301 houses in the city. In 2010, we had 15,875. So we lost 585 residents, but we gained 1,574 homes. So my biggest question is, how can I go to my constituents in my ward that is currently seeing a 21.75% business vacancy? And homes that may not be foreclosed but are sitting vacant, property values being diminished? How can I explain to them that I'm going to take tax dollars and continue to fund a development north of I-70? I personally can't do that. My voters, my constituents, said they also, because that's why I'm sitting here. So hopefully Nancy, that kind of goes to answer a little bit of your question as well earlier. I understand the numbers. I appreciate discussion. Is there a creative way that we can mesh this in some other way? I'm not quite for sure. Would I be willing to entertain that discussion all day long? Because as I said when I took this seat, I'll engage in discussion all day long and I, and I will find a way to a common solution. I just don't think that the solution that was done here and this amendment and this agreement in 1999, I'm sorry, 1990, and, and the numbers that's been presented and the 2009 agreement, I don't think works for our city at this point. But Mr. Conaway, I do respectfully appreciate your information. I'll be interested to see the numbers that you present to our deputy clerk to pass out to council. And thank you for your time.
If I could, just a comment or two and follow up. The 2009 agreement, you know, this is probably an opinion, but I'll offer it anyhow. Saved this city from a huge problem at the time it was signed. At the time it was signed, the governing body decided that they wanted it to be a long-term commitment. And they probably did so more because of what they wanted to, to receive from the developer. But the only way that you're going to get the, your partner in an agreement to give you a long-term commitment and performance is to agree to the same thing yourself. So you'll see when you read this, that there's binding effect on not only the developer, but the city. So the city choosing to, today decide that something that was done in 2009 was not the right thing to do, is something way above the vice president of construction to discuss. And that's probably something for Alan.
I guess my rebuttal would that be, if there's a binding contract, why in this world did we have 16 prior amendments? You would figure if it's a binding contract that it would just completely flow?
It will. And I, I thought that that's how I started off, but I'll be glad to repeat it. There's two methods of Deck requesting money in this agreement. One is the default formula. The other is through an extraordinary situation. The extraordinary situation requires that the amendment be written for each one. We can, we can divert to the default formula and make requests under that. And, you know, what I read you from the formula page would result in a 50% request for these lots, not $200,000. So that's part of what we've done to try to work with the city. When the city said, we, you know, the 30% was the comfort number because of things that work with the county and so forth, we've tried to, to do that. We've done that through amendment. We don't need the amendments. We can, we can make the request under the default formula. And from our perspective, we'd much rather do that because it allows us to ask for up to 50% of the, of the cost. And one other thing, Richard, in the, you know, I, I said this last week, I just don't understand how people in your ward think their tax dollars are supporting this effort. I just think that that needs to be clear, that this is, this is all funded with the TIF dollars that are generated in lieu of the tax payments from the homes that are built in Carriage Trails. So if, if people are under the assumption that their tax dollars are paying, I encourage them to watch these meetings or come, come and join us because we can clear their mind up on that. This is not costing anybody that doesn't live in Carriage Trails anything.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I'll deliver the, those percentages.
Thanks.
On, on that last point, Donnie, I think that in some of your numbers, you've shown that the average citywide income revenue is around $700 per household. Is that, that check?
I believe you've stated that that's a-
I thought it was closer to four.
You can, you can check one?
Yeah.
Nine hundred and seventy.
Oh, thank you, thanks, one.
Right.
I thought you, you had said that they turned out to be about the same, both in Carriage Trails and citywide.
Well, not per house, the percentage stays the same in terms of the-
You can check one?
Well, the percentage in terms of the people in each home who are paying is about 52%. The, so in other words, for every house there, we're getting about, for every dollar earned in a house, on average, we get about 52% of that in terms of tax, because some people don't pay in the city, people aren't, they pay elsewhere. But in terms of the average value- But in terms of the average value from the homes, the average homeowner and the average household income in Huber Heights is seventy thousand versus, I believe, fifty-two elsewhere. So it's a little different in terms of the, uh, the dollars generated. The percentage is about the same. The dollars generated per house is less. I had that on a slide. I'm trying to find that slide. Okay. Yeah, the average revenue generated per household to support city services in carriage trails is two thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. The average for other homes not in carriage trails, and that's just from census data, uh, one thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And that breaks down the property taxes and, uh, earnings taxes.
For some reason, these don't have numbers on them. What's, what's the title of the page?
Carriage Trails, uh, Revenue and支出 Breakdown.
Okay. City Local Income Tax, Water Sewer Fees, One-Time Fees, is that on the same thing? There's, there's, there's no number on the...
That revenue created versus investment in infrastructure is the information. And then it's got one point five million and the numbers that follow. Are you in the packet?
I'm in the packet, yeah.
Page fifty-six of the PDF file that's there.
Okay, good. That helps me.
No, I, you know, I'm, I just figured I was on the same document, and I tried to help.
Fifty-six? Total All Revenue Source of one point five?
Total All Revenue, maybe, sorry.
That's it, right there. This one right there. Okay, carriage, revenue generated per household to support city services after debt service on investment.
That's an average, that's a, that's a, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, um, value of the home versus the average value of the home in carriage trails. And then the average household income throughout the rest of the city times the two point two percent versus the average household income in carriage trails. That's where those numbers come from. The water numbers and the sewer numbers are the same because the bills are the same.
And that, for some reason, I'm remembering the breakout to be, to be different in this, this page.
Well, the, the fourteen twenty-seven has a couple of elements to it.
Yeah.
It's the, it's the earnings tax, basically fifty-six or fifty-two thousand per household times the fifty-two percent, times, uh, two point two three, two point two five percent versus seventy-plus thousand, times the percentage, times the percentage there. So it's basically about twenty thousand dollars more of the earnings tax, the earned income per, per household, uh, on average. And that's what drives that number, plus the home values being higher. Even if the TIF, there's still the TIF, it's still, uh, the main, the main culprit here is the, is the earnings tax.
For some reason, I, I heard in our discussion, or whatever, that, that the dollar amount was the same north and south of the city as far as what was generated per...
Oh, no, that was, uh, was, uh, that was, uh, carriage trails with the rest of Park Town and the rest of Miami County were essentially almost identical. So carriage trails was, the, the subsection of carriage trails versus everybody in Miami County was, was almost exactly the same in terms of income levels and the, uh, participation in terms of the, uh, the percentage of folks who pay in Huber Heights versus somewhere else. It was almost exactly the same. But when you take in the entire city, then you, you know, excluding carriage trails, well, that, that leaves nothing to include carriage trails, but, uh, you get, you just get a lower home value, you get a lower household. On, on average. I couldn't say that, you know, it's just a bigger subset and, uh, that's just on, that's just the average. Yeah, it's Park Town, it, it, it's Park Town and everybody else that's not in carriage trails. Doesn't have carriage trails addressed. Yes, it was, it was, it was, uh, about forty percent.
So we talked about this the other night when you were out a little bit, but, you know, I wanted to come up, because of a couple of statements made at the last work session, watched the video online. First, your remarks about the ninety thousand dollar lots, that he could be selling them for that. One phone call to Miami County, gave me a number, another IT department, they called me back in a couple of hours. I spent less than ten minutes. I've got the lot prices, so. The P forty-eight parcels are Huber Heights, Miami County parcels. According to the Miami County Auditor Report, it's less than thirty-six thousand, so afar from ninety, so. Mr. Starline, you...
On, on that point there, I said that we had no idea what the lots...
Right.
Cost, right there.
I'm just pointing out that that was a question you had that took me less than ten minutes without any city resources to get the answer to. On Mr. Starline, you got a little heated at the last meeting about people vacating your ward. And moving and taking money out of your ward, correct? Something along those lines. I am that house. I live one street over from your ward. We sold our house, but we sold it after we moved. Our house was empty for two and a half months. Taxes were paid, house was taken care of. The ward lost nothing. I went and pulled the data on the house up the street that was foreclosed on. Taxes were paid, the ward lost nothing. I went into your ward, right around the corner from your home, on Mandrake, two homes. Taxes were paid, your ward lost nothing. So I wanted to come in tonight with respect to the fact the attorney's here, ask you guys to get back on fact. A lot of misinformation flying around town. Enough's enough. The F and TIF stands for financing. When you say, Mr. Shaw, you say, how you go back and tell your ward, you're gonna continue to let this go on. You tell them the truth. We're paying for it. You're not. Your ward is not paying for this. The way I understand it, and I don't know the ins and outs completely, I'm trying to learn, and I'm trying to stay calm, so bear with me. The way I understand it, the only way your ward is gonna start paying our bill is if the developer walks and the servicing of the debt goes back to the city and we spread the debt to everybody in Huber instead of just carriage trails. So when you guys go out on social media, you have your eight thousand followers, start using the forum to spread the truth and unite some people. Quit trying to divide a town. Enough's enough. Okay? So, the everybody knows, the, the pilots, the payments and the little tax services, right? We are, am I correct? We are paying for that as residents. Is anybody in your ward paying for carriage trails right now? Because you should know. You, you're dug in as a rock solid no. That was your answer. You should know. Shame on any of you dug that, dug in that far who haven't read that seven-year-old agreement. Mr. Shaw, when you make comments about that this would move forward without stall, go on down and look at Lexington Place, Artisan Walk, and the fairways right up the road from me. Those have stalled for a long time. And I know some construction's getting back underway, but it was down a long time, so. Mr. Mayor, I know you and I disagreed on a table that you put on your blog that said if the city builds three hundred homes without the subsidy or the investment, the venture debt, and Mr. Starline keeps calling it, which is absurd, venture debt, you'd be the other side of it, you'd be the eighty percent investor, okay? Your math is correct on the sale side of the three hundred versus six hundred homes, but you can't ignore the additional economic impact of three hundred additional homes plus all the one-time fees to tap into your water lines. All those homes paying the water bills. And the fact that after the TIF expires, you have all those homes paying taxes to your city. You also put stuff on the blog about the debt service, that there's still however many millions added. But you also told us the other night that the TIF money paid off the Aquatic Center. Feel free to tell the residents that, instead of just acting like we're piling on debt, okay? Our revenues are helping in some areas. I understand some of you may not like the deal that was made, but it's the deal that was made. And from the numbers up there, it looks like a pretty fair deal. After this amendment, I think you guys need to sit down and find a way to hammer out the rest of the agreements. I think it's between the lawyers, okay? But this stuff dragging out and swinging mud back and forth across town on social media, getting people in an uproar against each other, I would ask Mr. Schaefer, if they start throwing misinformation around again, what are the repercussions? Because that's, you're feeding a mob mentality instead of using a forum that you have available that is a very successful forum to have eight thousand followers, okay? A lot of this stuff is out there. It's not hard to get. I think Mr. Hart, is that, Mr. Hart was in last time, okay? I think you'd asked about wanting to see the original deal. I've got a disc for you. I have that one, the amendment, the first sixteen amendments. I will give it to you. It's public record, okay? But I will tell you, when you asked last time and you said, "How much more is this gonna cost us?", okay? The answer's zero. Ken Conway said it was zero then. From what I understand, it's zero now, and if I'm wrong, it'd be a good time to talk about it. Wouldn't you agree with these guys right here? So, am I correct that his ward is not paying taxes in carriage trails? Or paying for us to build in carriage trails? Anybody?
Okay. So, here, here we are. There, there, there...
It's a yes/no. A yes/no question.
Ward three is not.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
So I will leave on top of that with...
Hold on, I'm talking, you ask a question, I'll answer the question, okay? All right, don't talk over top of me if you're gonna ask a question.
Fair enough.
All right. The property tax that carriage trails normally would pay, part of that would go to paying, paying police and fire, all right? Every community member in here pays police and fire. Now, obviously, I was misunderstood what Donnie had said there because I was under the impression that the amount of income tax that was being paid by the South Side was equal to the amount of income tax on average for all the residents, okay? So if on average, everybody in the South was paying seven hundred dollars, and they're not, and on average, everybody in the North was paying seven hundred dollars toward police and fire and all city services, then, income tax-wise, we're equal. In the South Side, average house has property tax associated with each of it. It's about two hundred dollars a house for property tax. On the North Side, what is scheduled, well, I'm sorry, what did you think it was, Donnie? One sixty-two per house. On the North Side, that would be three hundred dollars if that money were actually going into the normal place to pay property tax, all right? So therefore, in a normal situation, we would bring you in and you would actually be contributing more to the city services by a hundred and fifty dollars total. In the TIF way that you end up doing it, you don't pay into the regular, normal city services out there. If all the money that goes to the TIF goes to financing the infrastructure that went to build your house, then the South Side of the city would be paying a hundred and sixty more for city services than the North Side, okay? That money would be going to basically pay to build your house, all right? So it would make no sense to have a group of residents come in and pay seventy-seven percent or whatever it is toward city services and that thing. So therefore, would this, would the South Side be supplementing the North Side city services in that situation? Certainly, all right? Now, tonight, we hear that the, uh, income tax is about seven hundred in the North and about five hundred in the South, so they're about equal, all right? So... With the additional, the property tax and the income. Okay, so... That's why we have these discussions, all right? So that we can see what the numbers are, so that we can see what it is instead of doing a whole bunch of everybody doing their own numbers type things. That's why we have the discussion. That's why I've been asking for the discussion for two years, all right? Because when I put out my stuff on the blog, all I'm using is the current information that we're getting in verbal conversations here, verbal conversations there, uh, et cetera. I'm looking for this kind of information to come out on the city website in a manner that everybody can understand so I don't have to blog, so I don't have to ask the questions that way, all right? Because I know that, given the amount of hours I have, I'm not gonna put out exact information. That's why it's important that it comes, because there are questions that need to be answered. There is a responsibility to get the questions going. Yeah, certainly is. It's not false information. It's the information that's having, that's available today. It wasn't misleading. And that's the reason that, but the, the prompt is to get it so that we can get it correct on the website so people understand what the situation is. The city's website, the official website, all right? So that we can have, so I can point to this and say, "Hey, why are we doing this?" I, I asked two years ago, "Why are we supplementing twenty-two thousand dollars up there?" If the answer was, "Because we have a contract and the contract says this is how much we're gonna supplement", I don't know why that wasn't given two years ago.
I agree.
All right? But if you read it, there's a lot of may...
There's a lot of therefor's and whereas and... Yes.
What's on?
So, on, I mean, when you're talking about posting stuff online, so the table, the three hundred sales versus six hundred sales, okay? Quick math, uh, nine hundred and seven dollars a year per house, income tax revenue generated from your blog also, per house, times three hundred is an additional two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars a year in income tax off those three hundred homes. Water and sewer at five seventy-five a year, times three, uh, per tw- uh, per twenty-five, that's a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars a year coming in off of those homes, okay? One-time tap-in fees at eighty-nine, eight oh nine, again, these are, this is the printout I printed off of your blog also, okay? Fees permits, one-time tap-in fees at the eight eight nine, eight oh nine on twenty-five lots, times twelve lots, comes out to one point oh seven million, uh, dollars over those, uh, those extra three hundred homes. So that's why Sunday night, when I said the math is not the same, the math is not the same. There's an additional impact to those three hundred additional homes, not to mention any money that we spend in your town, okay? You know, there's a famous economist, John Maynard Keynes, back in the thirties, said, "When the data changes, so too can my conclusion." I hope you guys get all the data. Because jumping out there, your rock solid no remark, not to keep harping on it, dig in and look at the numbers. You said you'll look at the numbers. I'll sit with you one-on-one and go over the numbers and have a discussion. You know, it doesn't have to be in here in a forum or a back-and-forth. But this is your guys' job to know this stuff when you're gonna come out here and dig in like that online.
Right, and that's exactly why we, that's, that's exactly why it's done, all right? And it's to get, and those are all published like they're so that I could get this conversation going, so that we could get these things. And quite frankly, I mean, we know that some of that water offset, it'd be offset by some of the infrastructure...
But before you talk about building another water tower... we should be talking about putting a pressure station in.
Exactly.
I'm pretty sure it's a lot cheaper.
How many towers are in the city, Russ? Four? Well, how, do, do we know what, I mean, these are, do we know, do we meet the requirements or the guidelines for, uh, reserved water and towers?
Uh, yeah, there is a guideline for EPA, I don't have the exact numbers. We are short on that, but with increasing the pressure, as I've wanted to do here in the north end of town, uh, you'll get more reserved water out of the existing tanks that are on the north side. So, we should meet that requirement, or get close to that requirement, when that happens.
Right, so, again-
There's no need for another tower, if that's what somebody said.
Those are the discussions that need to be taken into account.
Regarding your comment saying that just tonight, we're seeing some information, I just, as a point of clarification, that presentation was presented probably three weeks ago, um, and has been published online, et cetera, so I just wanna make sure that clarification, if anybody's having any difficulty locating that, please let us know. But that wasn't something new tonight, that was discussed, I know, on a one-on-one with you, and then we also made that point, because it is an actual slide of that presentation when we, uh, when we did discuss it. So I just wanna make sure that, uh, any, um, assumption that that was just tonight given.
And we, I'm sorry, if I stated that, that, I mean, we're having the discussion-
Wait, sound it, I just think you're qualified.
We're having the discussion tonight, but, yes. Right, right, this presentation was given a few weeks ago. And such, ma'am?
Hi, yes, my name is Sheriff Corbett, I'm a resident of Ward Five, longtime homeowner. I have lived here, uh, since the ninth grade, when I moved from Dayton. Uh, left in ninety-two to join the military, but maintained my residence here, voted by ballots, write-in ballots. Moved back in two thousand and two, after ten years of service, and bought a house, uh, right after I moved back. My boys have graduated from the Huber system, just like I did. Uh, my first question is, Ms. Burge, I hope, um, before you support anything, that you meet with us, uh, down in the bottom, in the original part of Huber, um, I guess our biggest concern with supporting northern Huber, uh, more, with all the development that goes there, is the amount of vacancies we have in our area. We do not need another auto parts store, we do not need another goodwill, we need to fill the existing empty space that we have. So I hope that you, uh, set up a meeting to meet with your constituents down there. We've had a lot of discussion about what the contract says, what the contract doesn't say. I guess what is upsetting to me, and why I'm taking a bigger interest in the politics, is that I feel, um, call me naive, I do hold a MBA, is improper, this meeting is not a surprise, that each of you have not looked over this contract in tabs, in dog-eared, in highlighting it, is extraordinary to me. That is extraordinary to me. To not come in here, when you represent a whole city, and not know the numbers, is shocking. My question for our city attorney is, you know, instead of Mr. Starline asking DEC, "Well, what does it mean?" or, "If we back out, what happens?", I would ask you, Mr. Schaefer, if the city backs out, backs out, what happens? How could we be held liable or punished? Another question is, what is the original date of this contract? Are we under this contract to DEC for life? You know, are my kids gonna be worrying about this? Or is it extended by each amendment? Or, you know, or is it a thirty-year, twenty-year? What is the date? When are we done with DEC? And when is that then? My question is then now.
Twenty thirty-seven.
Twenty thirty-seven, good gravy. What were people thinking when they started this? That is amazing to me. Twenty thirty-seven, and there is no way to get out, it's my question then. So we're stuck unless, uh, Mr. Schaefer has read the contract and did say, "If we back out now," 'cause there's gotta be a punishment, there's gotta be something that happens, you know, anytime we back out of a deal, there's a, you know, somebody gets deemed, what is our deed? What do we get deemed with, if we back out now? 'Cause we can't just say, "No, we're not gonna do it," that's not how it happens in the big world. What is our deed? So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And, and we've already determined that these sections that Donnie pointed out tonight was something that we're going to, to look at and see if the maze and the shells are binding one way or the other.
So it had not been addressed before, when we knew we were gonna have this meeting? No one had looked at the contract? When we knew this was coming up, this has been talked about for weeks, and I would just like to say, as a resident of Huber Heights, that is a disappointment. 'Cause we are watching all of you. We are having meetings, we are getting together, we are talking. And as a city attorney, and I will look and find out if that's elected position, if that's a position you applied for, that is upsetting to me. That is upsetting to me. Somebody with a business degree, that I would go into a meeting with the city attorney about questions about a contract that my attorney hasn't even looked for, as the councilman, as the mayor, I'd be upset. Thank you.
You're misunderstanding-
Oh, okay, I apologize.
Yeah, we've been having discussions about this for two and a half years, since I've been there. I've read it a long time previously. Up until this point, we've, uh, said that there's nothing binding going forward into there. We got a, uh, a couple sections that are pointed out there, uh, in there that we're going to review again. Whether they turn out they're binding or not, we're going to look at fresh. But up until this time, we have been saying that they are not binding for things going forward, as far as what we are required to-
Well, I apologize, said the legal, our legal counsel said there was nothing binding up to this point. Or-
No, and, 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 and previous, and previous readings-
You're the city manager, I meant to leave the council for the city.
He's seen this, this is his document.
Yes. So, we're gonna, we're gonna reread it.
No, I'm, I'm, no, I'm asking, there, I'm asking you had to five-
Well, un- unfortunately, this is, this is another issue that I always have with these meetings and the read-aheads that we have. Alright, this is something that our staff brought to us today, without calling it forward into the read-aheads, so that we could be prepared to address these specific issues. So, when we're-
Can I ask Mr. Schaefer for his input as the attorney?
Well, again, we're going to let him go back and reread the sections and, and that were discussed today. Alright, when we walked in here, we did not know that we were going to talk specific sections on this contract. Alright, that's-
No, that's not okay, 'cause we knew we were gonna discuss about the contract, and I felt-
No, but we didn't.
I thought the council would be prepared, when the DC, the DEC was such a hot-ticket item for the residents of Carriage Trails, and for those of us that live in the poor section, it looks like, of Huber Heights.
You're absolutely right, it would be good.
And I'm ready. And I think Mr. Schaefer, if he has tabs, a folder, might be ready, but it looks like you're not ready to let him discuss, unless you have looked at and ready to filter his comments. And I take offense to that, Mr. McMasters. As a fellow football mom that I've been with you, I feel that this educated attorney probably has something to say. But, until you get a chance to listen, and therefore be able to come forward with a comeback, you're not gonna allow this man, who has gone to school, is the subject matter expert in a contract, talk. And I have a problem with that. Now, we allowed DEC wherever he went, he was a owner, treasurer, has a very safe interest in DEC, and I believe possibly a friend of his talk. I would like to hear my friend, my attorney talk. And I think that, you know, he should be allowed.
Alright, that's fine. Ellen?
Okay, so, just, uh, so the record's straight, I've not said anything at all tonight. But the, but the, but the, but the general answer is, is that there's a contract between two parties that was entered into, uh, at a particular point in time in the history of this project, which is right at the front end of the project, that, um, as it relates to the city and DEC, uh, you know, pretty much lasts until longer, until DEC completes its build-out. Okay, now the TIF might go longer, okay? And in that agreement, yes, we have certain obligations that we have to fulfill, and yes, there are certain obligations that DEC has to fulfill. And that, and those, and those understandings, those agreements, those obligations, uh, exist pretty much for the life of the contract on both sides. Now, are those obligations, uh, a million-dollar risks if you default? Not in all cases, maybe in none of the cases. But, but certainly there are obligations in these contracts, uh, on both sides of the equation, and they'll be there. With your background, you know very well, that a contract's contract's contract. And until a contract's completed, everybody has an obligation.
Where's my section eight part go?
This is kind of a question and answer to a little bit of something you said. And I agree with it. But we started looking at this, we're talking about the formulas that exist. You know, and you go, and it talks about value, well, the biggest, the biggest driver in this, in these formulas, is the actual value that's created in terms. And, as the value is created, it creates a, that formula in terms of what our obligation is, changes every time a house is built. So, three years ago, they may not have met a point where there was, or two years ago, or one year ago, they might not have made a point where they would be entitled to something until two thousand and eighteen. But we've reached a point now, where everything they build from this point forward is going to be, the revenue is gonna be received in two thousand and eighteen plus. So we're kinda getting to a point where we're, we need to look at, before this, we, we did have some options, we did have to approve a, uh, an amendment. We could, that was the purpose, and then come to the council, so you could say, "No." But, the, now, we need to take into account that two thousand and eighteen formula, because all the revenues, basically, are gonna be two thousand and eighteen. So, that's what, that's my point is, is that, the answer could have been, two years ago, we didn't have to do that. But as you move forward, and there's value, the formula changes, and you just calculate it every time. That would be the calculation going forward.
And, 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 the issue tonight is, even tonight, we said that we didn't have to give them any portion. Now, that's different than actually what Ken's talking about, 'cause he thinks that there's a formula for now as well. But, I mean, your presentation today says, under four E, we didn't have to give any supplement, or any-
There's a formula there, that I'm not trying to give an opinion on that.
Okay.
Right, so we'll think, so when we look at four E, and we see words like, "May request", and it doesn't obligate us to actually give any of this in four E. It just says that they may request, it doesn't say, it's just obvious that we could give any of that. And then when you look at A, when they have the formula, and they, and they, and they look at it, it says, "Additional public improvements to how it may be used, may be used", in the manner prescribed in section four point four E. So if you didn't have to give it in four E in the first place, and section eight tells you that you, they can request it under four point four E again, then there's no obligation to actually, to actually-
Right, and, and that's, and that's what I'm saying, that we're not, I didn't wanna get into that discussion now. It's, you send it back to the attorney, and, and, and he looks at what you brought up today, and see if it's consistent with the way that we've been talking about it for the last six, seven months. If it's not, if we have a different opinion, then, he's got the opportunity to look at it fresh, instead of on the run. Alright, I don't know, where are we at here? Oh, okay, so we're gonna have the next reading at the, uh, next, that'll be the second reading?
Should I, is there something that someone needs?
Try to write down the questions. And I'd like to, uh, address that, just a, just a point of procedure, Mr. Mayor, um, again, with kind of a, an accusation, the staff wasn't prepared to provide you adequate preparation. Again, understand the schedule, that we discussed this at, and had some additional information from the first reading. Um, the read-ahead, the packet information is due, um, that was on a Monday night. The read-ahead and packet information is due at Wednesday at noon. To say that we stopped discussing and stopped continuing work on those particular items, we don't. Uh, this discussion regarding more in-depth look at the contract, the, the numbers and the fundamentals of it are in there. But there's always additional discussion, so that we can continue to evaluate and look at. We can't predict or guess exactly what your questions might be to fully satisfy and, and complete a read-ahead. Uh, but we continue our discussions and our research, and that sometimes prompts some additional points. We hope that these forums are designed so that we can bring those points forward to start discussion, not to be criticized for bringing those points up. So, that's how that works, uh, that's how that worked. And, and we do apologize for not having specific read-aheads for this particular, uh, contract and document. But it was a late in last week and beginning this week discussion and review, saying, "Hey, this is, this is something we need to consider, because some points we took from the last discussion." Um, so, to Don's point, I was gonna ask the same thing. Are there any particular things that we wanna charge back to, uh, to make sure, to make an attempt for the next, um, packet, which I believe is gonna be due by tomorrow at, uh, by five, or Wednesday by five o'clock, um, that we can attempt to fit in the schedule and, and get in? So, thank, you, Don jumped right into the same question I was gonna ask.
And, and, and I guess, uh, I might have overreacted there as well. The fact that we didn't have tabs here as council members. Obviously, if, if things come up, that's, uh, I don't know, we'll, we'll have that discussion as well.
I was trying to tell you where the law-
That's fine, and actually, I was satisfied with the fact that we were gonna go back and, and re, and relook at the thing. It's, I reacted poorly to, to, to the suggestion that I needed to have tabs on something I didn't know was coming. But, uh, okay.
Do you want to read a different section of that? May I suggest that you get the defined terms to read for that? Because in the defined terms, is where I was reading the formulas from. So you'll see, different funds are defined by, uh, pages of the way to calculate it. So, maybe rather than just looking at section four and section eight, grab that, grab that from section-
Actually, that, that document there has the defined terms.
Okay, if you want that, yeah.
Yeah, to have a whole document available, and link to, and our next packet would be good, so that we can just pull it up and, and don't have to do the whole search and, and such. Although, I'm pretty sure that I've downloaded it and have it somewhere on my computer, it's just... But, but it's the easier that I can get to, the easier the residents can get to, the better off we are. So, second reading, next, uh, next, and then it'll pass to a third reading? Is that the idea?
Yeah, I believe that was the original schedule, and upon original presentation, yes. Alright.
If it passes, and I'm just saying, we'll, we'll need to do a supplemental appropriation. So on the third reading, we will probably bring that as well. So that if you pass this, we would need to appropriate money as well. So, we wouldn't wanna have to pass this and then wait ten weeks to get the, to do what you already- Just so that, I'm just letting you know, heads up, that that would be coming with the third reading.
Ken, can we have it out for a reading in the last meeting as well?
Yeah, it'll just, well, yeah, but it won't be, we're not gonna put it forward unless this thing gets passed, there's no reason to pass a supplemental if, if you don't pass this.
But is there a reason why we wouldn't have, uh, that on the agenda? I mean, I, I mean, we can negotiate-
It'll be on the third reading.
Yeah, is there a reason why we wouldn't have it on the second reading agenda?
Yeah, we've got existing things within the supplemental appropriations that have different schedules, but if we've got another one for the next one, I suppose we can add it and get a first reading.
That's fine, I, I, okay. I, I guess I don't have them. I, I guess I don't have them. I mean, I like to see things on a number of times if we know they're coming. All right.
And that's as a result of us wanting to do the, uh, the, the, the payment of it rather than financing it, correct? So that we can do the advance through the water sewer event?
We can do it in advance. Still, issue, if, if council determines, we'll want to do that later. So, it, it really, that's, that's an option. We've got two years to figure that out if you want to do it.
But as you recall, the staff's recommendation was to do the things, not to do the financing.
Yeah.
I would like to say one more time about the next working meeting. I know the obligation's on both sides, but could I get an answer? If we backed out of the DEC deal, what is our punishment as a state? I, that, I, you know, I know the obligation, but if we're under a contract, if I backed out of that real estate deal to buy a house, I lose five hundred dollars or the earnest money. I lose that money. What do we lose if we back out of this contract with DEC?
Reputation.
Okay.
There's got to be more than reputation, because I have rebuilt that. I've been recovering ten years, I've rebuilt my reputation. What do we lose financially? Because that's what worries me. I don't care about the reputation of them. My daughter's in the gutter, so if I see them, what do we lose financially of them? That's what I worry about.
Thank you.
And I'd like to speak at that before we go to vote on the, after the third reading. Thank you.
All right. So are we ready for the next agenda item? Then why don't we take about a ten minute break? All right, that was better. Yeah, thank you. I need an agenda. You all right, Bonnie?
Yeah.
Hanging in there?
I guess.
What's my email address? T McMasters? Yeah. Oh. You mean the rest of this? Yeah, it's fine. Which should be the same as what's in the contract, right? Yeah, but, yeah, that'll be good, that way I'll see what you're looking at. Yeah, there's going to be a lot more of it.
Yeah. Did you want... Did you want to see them?
Yeah.
They should be coming out soon. Not yet, I think. Oh, oh. That's, I want to tell you. Good. Hello. I know. Have fingers? Oh, you do? Oh my. Oh my goodness.
Oh, let me grab a... Hey, I forgot my name. Thank you. Yeah, take care. We're going to pound on this, though.
Katie, you were almost there.
I know. Hello.
Uh, you didn't want to go.
We're only, we're only at the three and a half hour break. What was the last meeting, seven hours?
You would?
Yeah, we got out at one. Oh, yeah. If you're looking for hope.
I was, I was thinking this was going to be shorter now.
You can't go wrong first and hot that. And I'm that glass half full kind of guy, I mean...
All right, good. You ready? All right. Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, I, 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 no, I, like I said, I've read the contract. After four or six months, and when you're having the same conversations, if you haven't looked at it over there, maybe, maybe you get off track. You know? Yeah. All right, uh, looks like we, we're, uh, coming back in the session. You ready, Mark? Are we running? All right, good. So next, um, there is, uh, BWC Group Experience Rating Program. Sorry, Katie.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the annual legislation that comes before you, um, in regard to, sorry, pardon me. In regard to the, um, group rating program that we can enter into. Um, again, Ohio Municipal League has invited us to participate. And the legislation before you authorizes the city manager to enter into agreements with, um, the group rating program and also with comp management, who is our TPA. They review claims every year with us. For 2017, I don't have the base rate yet. They don't typically release those until December, so I won't get those until December this year. So I don't have a premium cost for you for 2017 as of yet. But if you have any questions, feel free, and I can, uh, bring it in for you.
So, are we approving the agreement for 2017?
Yes, this is for 2017. This is just for us to participate. There's actually no agreement. There's a, I have a one sheet that Rob will sign. Authorizing us to go into group rating program. See our discount.
Counsel? This is darling.
Katie, do we have an idea about when we'll get that rate information? I can't recall when it comes.
It's usually around December when they, when they release it. Um, this year, for 2016, the rate was, I think, 1.83. So I think we're pretty constant with the conversation I have with our TPA. So hopefully it'll be around that same, same rate. At least I'm keeping my fingers crossed.
Everyone stay safe over the summer. Thank you.
And what are the other options if we don't go this way?
Um, we would go through individual rating, which is much higher. Our discount with the group rating program is roughly about saving of thirty thousand dollars compared to the individual rating.
All right. So we'll see this and what's, what's the request when we see it on, uh, Monday?
Uh, the due date is not till May 31st, so I didn't write it as an emergency. Uh, we can go through all three readings if that's what council desires.
All right.
So, I'll have it for Monday.
I'm not sure why this wasn't the first thing on the agenda.
I can't disagree, no.
All right, thank you very much. And we'll move on to supplemental appropriations.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, in your packet, I had, um, just a few items for the supplemental appropriation. I'll go over those briefly. And then I do have some additions that have come up since the packet went out. Five thousand dollars for fire CPR class supplies. We're taking a different route on this. Um, now, Mark and I have been talking, and what's been happening up to now is that when he gets, um... Um, now, Mark and I have been talking, and, um, what's been happening up to now is that when he gets, um, um, when he runs the CPR class and gets deposits on who's gonna pay to attend that class, then he has me put it into the, um, budget and then bring a supplemental, increasing the budgets paid for the supplies needed for that class. Um, we said this has been going on in bits and pieces for the last couple of years, and it's probably just better if we just set a budget of $5,000, uh, both on the revenue side and the expense side to cover these classes. And if the, if the money, if, in other words, if the, if he doesn't get enough people attending these classes, which this is a very low number, so we think he'll definitely hit that. Uh, if he doesn't, then that money would not be spent on any other purpose or transferred to any of the line. It would only be spent for that purpose. Uh, the next item, uh, another $5,000 for fire operating capital needs, uh, such as axes, hoses, and other items. Uh, $3,645 for police training. Um, and this was a, a 2015 purchase order was closed, um, by mistake, and they need this money for training this year, and this would, um, be for training, uh, in the remainder of 2016, so they'd like that re-appropriated. Once you close a PO from a previous year, you cannot, uh, it's gone. You can't, um, rebudget it. It's in a previous year's budget, so, uh, they'd like, if they, they knew that they were gonna use that, and it got closed by accident, and so they'd like it added to their budget this year. And then the final item is $32,500 for fire capital needs, and I've detailed those, uh, and, and Mark provided those details. So, thank you, Mark. Um, personal protective equipment, um, additional protective equipment such as gloves, eye protection helmets, self-contained breathing apparatus bottles, and thermal image camera. And I've, uh, put the dollar amount on there, uh, which I received from Mark on all those items. Now, in addition to these, what's, what's come up in, uh, the last week, um, it's just simply health insurance increases. We've had, uh, we have a new person in finance doing our accounts payable. Uh, the one previously did not have family insurance, and the new one, uh, has asked for family insurance. And we've got, uh, someone new in, um, um, dispatch who is, uh, asking for family insurance. That wasn't budgeted, uh, the person who previously filled that position, which when we budget at the beginning of the year is based on who's filling that position currently. And so, um, we have some, um, health insurance changes totaling $27,150, and that's divided between the general fund, the street fund, the water fund, and the sewer fund. And I'll get these changes, uh, into the packet for Monday, because I would like this approved with three readings on Monday, uh, because Mark, uh, does need some of his items, uh, right away, uh, the increase that we're asking for in the budget for that.
Do you say you...say that again?
Most of the supplemental appropriations that I bring to council need to be approved immediately with three readings. Now, we have had a couple this year that did not need three readings and approval right away, so I went the whole process with them. But now we're back to, in this particular one, items that are needed, and can't wait six weeks for it to have three readings with council.
Okay, so you're asking for it to be approved on the first reading?
Uh, yes, yes, first reading Monday night and, and approval.
Okay. Counsel? Mr. Shaw?
Um, Mr. Bell, question for you, uh, 'cause now this is up to about $68,000, um, and some change. Um, when this, when you go in and add that back in, I don't know if, maybe you can just email me a spreadsheet or maybe include it in the packet. Um, here it says source of funds, various funds, and I know you kinda went through that. Would you be able, I mean, would it be any more cumbersome for you to spell out which one of these are gonna be paid out with what funds in, in the read ahead?
Uh, yes, that is in, uh, it's actually in the read ahead that you got for tonight. If you look at Exhibit A, you'll see that, uh, $10,000 is in, uh, Section 6 of the approved budget, which is the fire fund. Uh, $3,645 is in the law enforcement assistance grant fund, and $32,500 is in the fire capital equipment fund. And when I updated, uh, the changes that I told you about, um, it's gonna be $21,800 in the general fund, $1,350 for the street fund, $2,000 for the water fund, and $2,000 for the sewer fund. And so, those are always, um, listed in Exhibit A by fund. And so, when I put various, it's because I don't feel like listing six or eight or 12 different funds, um, uh, on the, on the impact. That's why I always say various.
And I did see that section in there. My only situation is where it came into the confusing part for me. And your explanation did help a little bit, is because it kinda seemed like it, uh, kind of all ran together in those subsections. But with your explanation, it does make a little bit more sense.
Okay, yeah, I listed, because I have to tell you exactly, because, because the legislation is passed with different sections for different funds. When I bring it to you as a supplemental, the, uh, exhibit always lists exactly the amount of dollars. And it's not just the, the section. It's in some cases a subsection. And then also, I'm listing, these all happen to be, um, operations and capital. Sometimes it's personnel, sometimes it's debt, sometimes it's advances or transfers. So, I have to be very descriptive on what I list on the supplemental. So, if you go through the entire Exhibit A, you'll see exactly, pinpointed where that increase in the budget is.
And, and I do see in the actual ordinance, in Section 1, it does mention the Exhibit A. Instead of spelling it all out in the ordinance, you know, just flatlining it with an exhibit. Um, that's understood. I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
Jim, I, I kind of, uh, understand what Mr. Shaw is talking about. Would it be possible in that exhibit part, which, you know, is just an exhibit to that ordinance, uh, maybe putting it in a, just a table rather than a script version? That might just be, you know, real easy, a little bit more graphic, to say, "This amount from this fund, and this amount from that fund," kinda just to supplement the supplement? Um, you, you see what I'm saying? 'Cause, you know, that's normally where you would see numbers. I'm not trying to create extra work for you, but just in a, a quick table that would just, um, you know, spell it out in more graphic format than, than written words. Does that make sense? Could, could we maybe throw that in?
It does make sense. It does create a lot more work for me. Um, I do try and explain it specifically in the purpose and background section, where it's talking about $5,000 for fire CPR class, for fire operating capital needs. So, I do try and manually describe it, but as far as putting it together...
Yeah, I'm just talking about at the end, at the exhibit, uh, at the bottom, just making a table with a couple of columns that has a number, and then what fund it's from, just so that you can look right at that and, and grab it and know what number is coming from what fund.
Or maybe, um...
I'll show you what I'm talking about.
I, I know exactly what you're talking about. I'm, um, the exhibit, I've, I've, I beg to, uh, say that the, the exhibit is really for the purpose of changing the ordinance the way it was written. So, if I were to put it anyplace, then I would recommend putting it under fiscal impact. There's a place for, uh, as much description in fiscal impact that I, uh, that I can put in there, the table on that page. Maybe that'd be more appropriate.
Sure, we can, uh, we can work on.
Alright. Counsel? Alright, so we'll see this, uh, Monday and expect it to be passed on the first reading. And no reason for emergency, 'cause it automatically goes immediately for supplemental appropriations. Alright, and we'll move on to banners and signs. Mr. Starling?
Scott, you and I have worked on this, and, uh, would you be willing to take the first stab, and then I'll add in, if that's okay with you?
I can just basically describe what we put in the packets. Um, as we've discussed on numerous occasions about the opportunity of putting banners up on poles along certain corridors. Brant Pike was one of those corridors of, like, first, uh, looking at, because that's, uh, more of a commercial district there, uh, around the, the center of the city. Um, I put in the packet, uh, a little description of where all the poles are. Um, in there also, uh, contacted DPNL about the rules on using those poles, so there's fees involved with using those poles. Some example, um, of what some of them look like and other, just, uh, just general pictures on poles.
Scott, let me interrupt real quick, just because for my colleagues, the photograph, because of the photographing black and white, uh, regarding the pole locations versus what Scott had showed me when we talked, has... So, the color might help if you're not, if you're wanting to see exactly which poles are, are being identified, 'cause we're not just talking Brant Pike. We're also talking a little bit on Chambersburg as well, that area. So, it's hard to see in the black and white. I just wanted to, before we got too much farther, see, it's not that easy to read.
It is in color.
Yeah. Budget cuts, we copied in black and white. Um, so, just if anyone's looking for pole locations in terms of where we're at, Scott should have a color one that makes it a whole lot easier to read. I knew, because I had seen it, but just letting everyone know on that point. Sorry to interrupt, Scott.
In general, it shows that there's a lot of poles out there. So, a lot of opportunity. One of the things to look at, one of the first discussions was about the opportunity of having sponsors of those, and I just wanted to show you. This was just a very rough, Marigold Festival, put the Huber Heights logo on the bottom. That could be a sponsorship, kind of, some business would be at the bottom. That's one of those. Um, these, uh, as they're being up there, there's a question of whether that's big enough for a sponsor to really get noticed for the cost, that kinda thing. So, um, that would be a discussion point. Uh, the costs, uh, there's wide range. We did go forward, there'd be an RFP for, uh, get multiple quotes. There's a lot of places to do these banners. Uh, but in general, about $30 each, and for the banners themselves, and then the brackets themselves would be about, uh, $85 to $90 each. So, uh, that plus the cost of, uh, the, uh, using the poles of DPNL, if that's, uh, the way we go, um, you're looking at upwards of $125 apiece on this. Um, so, uh, we did discuss, last time we discussed it, as we are going through with the, uh, Brant Pike Target Revitalization Plan, that, um, we would highly recommend, uh, discussing that with the consultant, um, as if this is a, um, something that can be worked into that program.
And adding... There it is. Adding on to that, basically, at this point, with Scott and I having some information, but then discussing, um, the consultant that now is coming in, that's in part where I wanted to, with, with Scott, update you all, my colleagues, on this, and discuss whether or not this is something that we, we are interested in continuing going forward, because I did not want us to present it to the, um, project manager's the wrong name, but the consultant, there it is. Thank you. Um, I didn't want to present it to the consultant if there is no appetite to go forward on this. I think this would help the city. We do have some banners already in, in some very limited locations, but we did that, I think, back in 2012-ish, um, 12, 13, somewhere in there, where we've got city banners at the intersection, in particular at Cloud Park, um, the entrance to Cloud Park. Uh, we have the city banners there from the old, um, project that we had, and I think one or two other locations, in terms of having something like that. What originally got me on this idea, um, is that it would be great for the city to have that information out there, to have an opportunity, to have more of a community feel. Uh, with that, Nancy, you may not be aware of the background on that, but part of it for me was, growing up in Vandelia, the State Route 40 National Road, the restaurant road that's there, has all those banners that the city rotates out on a, on a pretty consistent basis, and has some really good, um, variety to it. You've got not only things like Christmas themes and Easter themes and all of that, but obviously their airfare, and, and that comes in. And then also, um, when the Oktoberfest, the Vandelia Sister Cities Group puts on their Oktoberfest, the city has, um, banners that reflect the Oktoberfest theme that go out as well, and, and certain others. Um, one thing that was brought to my idea on this was that Vandelia also had the farmer's market. But as we've talked previously, the one major difference there, to be fair, is that Vandelia's farmer's market is part of the city government program, whereas here it's a private entity. So, part of the discussion has been whether or not we wanted to bring businesses in, and that's what prompted the discussion of possibly having advertisers and thereby defraying some of the costs to, to the city itself.
What happens if you have different sponsors?
Well, it would be something where we would purchase with the agreement that they would get probably the life of the...
About three years is a lifespan of these, is what we're being told. I mean, as they start to fade and everything. So, the sponsorship is for, could be for the total cost. So, as long as it's in good shape, they've got it.
So, that would basically buy for the three years or whatever. On, on the cost that you have there for the inspections and engineering fees and all that, how many of these are recurring?
Regarding the... Inspection fees, my understanding was that that would be, um, to put the... And Scott, correct me if I've misread this, but basically, putting the setup up the one time. So, I don't think the inspection goes more than the one-time per pole. Uh, the engineering was to make any that would not hold the, the brackets and all of that. So, that's not even a per pole for all the poles that we're looking at. It's only any that need, my phrase, shoring up. Um, and then the make-ready would have a variety to it. And then the, the one that is recurring is, I believe, the annual rental fee, which is $3.50 per pole. Um, so, there would be some reoccurring costs as this project would go forward, but I don't anticipate just roughly that it would be that much. And then, to your point, we could, Scott and I, as we prepped on this, the city could choose, if we wanted to, to not have any advertising, but just purchase, um, whatever number we want to use on this and have it as part of our marketing budget, part of our economic development, something like that. Vandelia's does not have a, um, marketing piece on, with it. They fund it all, is my understanding. Why I proposed that was twofold. Essentially, wanted to pay some of the costs for the city, and I thought that would be worth exploring. And then the second thing is, is it would actually create an opportunity for some of our local businesses to perhaps get advertising that they otherwise wouldn't get. Um, one of the questions that was asked last year, frankly, from your predecessor, was how do we decide? And I think that probably is something that we should talk with our, um, consultant and see if they have any thoughts on that. If not, then I think the city should probably assign that, um, as something where we set some guidelines, the, the high-level policies of how we do it, and I think we can do that. I think we have other guidelines in terms of advertising and, and policies on that for things like the Marigold and the, um, Fourth of July. I could be wrong, but I think we've got some guidelines already built in on when the city takes private, um, marketing and sponsorship from the entities on which ones we use. Obviously, we would probably want to avoid, you know, a liquor store that's getting to, um, advertised during the Christmas holiday, or the New Year's holiday. So, I think there's some information with that. Scott and I had gotten enough information. And I, I should emphasize, if I haven't already, my colleague, he's done a phenomenal job of helping me get this information and pass it along. I think we're at that point that if the council wants to move forward, then the question is, do we want to get the information and put it out to the consultant and then come back perhaps one more time? And at that point, if everything looks good, then we would put legislation together. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that...except for Shaw.
Mr. Shaw?
Thank you. I believe when this was, um, discussed previously, that this, this was a gathering situation of information. Um, I believe it was on this topic. Um, one of the questions I asked is, this essentially would be putting an additional work strain on our public works department. Um, kinda twofold question. A, do we have the appropriate equipment to continue these up and down? And two, what kind of workload would this put on, on the additional staff?
Our public works department are the ones that install the ones that, one, that is down at Cloud Park entrance. Also, at Taylorsville and Brant, and Chambersburg and Brant, they've had them out for, like, the parade, uh, Fourth of July, those kinda things. They have the American flag-type ones. But it is the public works department that have done that in the past. So, yes, they have the equipment, yes, they have the ability. The amount of time depends on how many, uh, poles you want to do and their availability depends on what time of year it is. So, yes, they can.
And, and I would assume that before we give a, a complete go-ahead, we would have some rough sketch numbers. And I would assume that those numbers would be built into the quote-unquote sponsorship cost to make sure that all costs are associated with these banners, if that's the way we decide to move.
We can?
Okay.
Yeah, if we go the sponsorship route, obviously, we would try to build those numbers in to cover that. I didn't know, in terms of the proposal, I, I had not envisioned a one-hundred percent sponsorship, but some contribution, but not a hundred percent. We obviously can look at those numbers and see what we want to do. And at that point, it becomes, you know, a market, is there a market out there? And that's where I have reached out previously to the chamber. They said to avoid any, um, internal, um, addressing with them. They didn't want to have to be the decision-makers for a project that we are doing. But they have indicated, at least to me, that they would be willing to help put the information out if we provided it to them.
I, I think the overall program, in my opinion, is, is, is great. I think it, it's got nothing but a positive outlook on it. I just, I just want to make sure that we have any hidden costs or associated fees completely lined out for our discussion phase and research. And I think moving that information forward with the, uh, um, you know, the Brant Pike, you know, development, uh, I think would just add another layer of bonus onto that. So, I, I think this is a, a good step in the right direction and, uh, be interested to see how it moves forward.
Scott, Chip.
Tyler, I'd also like to have another set of figures. Because if we wouldn't get sponsors, I'd like to get this set of figures that shows the actual cost of what it would do to have the signs. Because I think it's a great idea. I think it's very worthwhile. But I'd like to see a comparison so that if we do get sponsors, we will know what it entails and how much we need to get to cover it. Does that make sense to you?
I think it does. We can work on that. And I think part is seeing what the consultant, if, if they give us information on this, is what they think might be the appropriate balance on that.
Mr. Campbell.
Neither Scott or Tyler. Did you say that we're doing some banners now?
We do have a few out there now, yes.
And is this Tyler just adding to that program?
I, there are banners out there. I don't think it's adding to that program. If, if I recall correctly, that was something that we had done as part of our, um, marketing a while ago. Bob Parks.
Bob Parks.
Thank you. Mr. Parks had identified very select locations that we did a couple of them. And this would, I don't think be stepping on what that project was, but basically saying, we want to take this all the way down the street.
Yes, so, so adding to that same program.
Yes, now I understand, yes.
And, and we must have a program in place to do that.
The few that we have, do we change? I don't think we change them out that often right now, the few that are out there.
Don't know how many different styles that we may have or if we have replaced them over the years or if we just have the same ones that, and once they're done, they're done. I'll find that out.
And, and are you talking about maybe having some of them up as much as three years?
I think they could go up as, but I think the, the idea is that they would be seasonal or, or a period of time. So, they would go up for a period of time and then come down on the next one. Like billboards by the highway get up and go up for a certain period of time and then they come down and a new one goes up and all of that. I think it would be something similar to that.
That might have an element of seasonal, Christmas, Easter, that type of thing?
Yes, sir. Similar to what I've seen in Vandelia, basically, I can't say for certain that it's on a monthly basis, but it's on a period of time. Because obviously, the Oktoberfest one is up just before the Oktoberfest and is probably there maybe a week or two after that and then the next season comes in.
And is that what we're going to work on and provide us? Is maybe the schematic or the rules of how that's going to work? How often we're going to change them out and so on?
Correct. And, and I think either council can set that or if we provide guidelines that we want, you know, arrange from staff to decide and then basically, here's the number. Because Scott and I, in terms of just a, a what-if on this, we had talked about if we did it once a month, then basically, we know we've got to get twelve. If we tried to find certain months that have more, then we'd have to adjust that. And I think then we identify the numbers. Obviously, July fourth is going to be around that, but it's going to be in, or late June as well because we've had our fireworks celebration on sometimes closer to the end of June versus the beginning of July. So, something like that.
And at some point, we want to take those down. And, and there should be in this policy when that happens. So, are we going to get that level of detail, hopefully?
I think so, yes.
And if we have sponsorships or, and access funds, what's possible they go into?
I, I did not envision that the sponsorships would cover one-hundred percent of that, it, to where there would be access funds. But if we get to that point and, and have it, then probably we either use it to help offset some of the, um, costs of the public works guys in terms of involved with that. Or, and I'm not envisioning this as a indirect fundraiser, but we could see. It might be something that we use to help a little bit with... Oh, yeah, I agree. We need some.
Would you consider maybe a program that would evolve and get the program passed? Maybe it's not a sponsorship program initially, uh, and demonstrate what these banners are going to look like? Have some of them up or, and, and maybe be able to market them that way. Where, where on our city newsletter, we could say effective, you know, on a specific date, you know, you could buy sponsorships to these banners?
I think that's definitely...
And maybe position into those.
A, almost like a proof-of-concept sort of demonstration. I could see us doing that as well. Especially if, knowing our timeline on this somewhat, if we get the input from the consultants and we're working on Brant Pike Revitalization, if he identifies, okay, here are three, you know, major things, the Fourth of July, something like that, where we put that in for proof of concept, then we can build from there. So, I like that, certainly.
Okay.
The only question I have, my name's Wheeler Goldie, sixty-eight oh seven Barber Drive. The only question I have when it comes to these banners is the assemblies to put them up on these poles, are they going to be a two-piece or a four-piece? Is each company that you're possibly looking at sponsoring going to purchase more than one banner? Or is it going to be where you can have their company logo on a bottom on a two-piece and then whatever the city is promoting at that time on another two-piece?
My understanding was if it's got the sponsorship, the banner will be a two-faced banner, basically going north and south on, unlike Brant. And then the city piece would be at the top of the banner and then the sponsorship logo would be at the bottom. But it would be all one banner, not pieces of banner.
Okay, so is the company that's sponsoring that particular pole going to be included on each one of the city's different banners? Or can we possibly look at if somebody's going to sponsor that pole, having two different setups? One for their logo that's sponsoring it and then one for what the city is doing?
The, the original idea is that, um, the sponsors would be in packages of a row of them, not just one at a time type thing. Of a, a sponsor would be, uh, on the bottom and whatever event on the top. And somebody would sponsor ten of them. So, they would have ten in a row on that. Um, of, and that's just that event they would be on. They could sponsor more events, that kind of thing. But in general, two, two brackets, one at the top, one at the bottom. Not, uh, we, we weren't looking at two banners per pole of city part and then sponsor part having their own separate banner. Something that could be looked into if there was interest. But the idea was just one banner that had to vote.
Thank you. So, each banner would be a hundred and twenty-five and you'd expect somebody to sponsor ten. So, it'd be twelve hundred and fifty dollars for them to...
Whatever number that it may be that, if it's possible. That was the original idea. And then we can work out what the true costs are as developing the program.
I, I actually kind of like the separate part as well because then it's a one-time cost for the company to come out there. And then if the date changes for your Marigold Festival the next year, you're only, you're only, uh, you can still put the date on, you just buy a new banner and, and the...
Doubles the cost to have two banners and two sets of brackets, but yeah.
Yeah, one below the other, I'm not sure. It'd be interesting to see what the costs were.
There's also, uh, another issue to consider and that would be the co-branding aspect. A, a business may want to be co-branded on the same vinyl, you know, on the same banner along with the city. And the city, you know, want to be combined as well, just, just a thought. Bring back options?
Yeah. And I was envisioning to be so close together that it would look like they were the same anyway. But, uh, but yeah, I, I understand that. It's just a, would, it may be interesting or to have it so that the, the companies can sponsor the Marigold Festival and still sponsor the Fourth of July Parade without, and the only thing you'd have to print is the Fourth of July Parade. Because I, you know, it's nice, well, obviously, the Fourth of July, well, it's on the Fourth of July, it's, it's on there. But if, for every year, you're changing the date of the Marigold Festival, it'd be nice to be able to get the date on the, on the actual event so people that drive in the city the month before know that it's coming on the day as opposed to knowing it's coming sometime that month.
The only thing I've seen on that in terms of my, my, um, experience watching the Vandelia setup is that they don't put dates on anything. They have it set for events for what I could see in the months. So, basically, the airfare parade, the banner was designed to basically have the airplane logo and all of that. And they didn't have the date on it because it was essentially advertising that event and you would get that feel from that. Oktoberfest is the same thing, they don't put the date on that. For dates on events like the Fourth of July or all of that, if we're, it's, those are on other signs that you've got elsewhere. But I can see that point. I think you more keep them...
Simple.
Simple.
On the main ones that we can look into, they may make, we'll call it a tile that has a date that, that changes out every year.
Yeah, okay. All right, so basically, we're going to send this to our economic developer and...
The consultant for the, for the Brant Pike Corridor, Scott, is, I think, going to be able to provide that information. I'll gladly provide it as well. We don't have any legislation to go forward yet. I don't think we're at that point. I could be wrong.
Is this something we should have Alan start looking at?
For changing the code, so...
Yeah, change of the code. How do we, uh, select the vendor who's going to partnership sponsor that event? So, another vendor, you know, doesn't...
Will we have that, should Alan, or the...
For like fireworks already?
Right now, there's governmental signs in the code for that, that kind of thing. But, um, I'll get with, uh, the law department about, um, anything we need to look at to make sure everything's right.
Okay. Thank you. All right, next agenda item, Chambersburg Road Improvements.
Oh, yes, uh, good evening, council. This legislation is for Chambersburg Road Phase One. Uh, this is Chambersburg Road widening, uh, to three lanes just east of Brant to Evergreenwood Drive. Uh, the project will include new curbing, an eight-foot concrete sidewalk or bike path on the north side, storm sewer and sanitary sewer. Uh, this is the first phase of, uh, many phases going east on, uh, Chambersburg. Uh, we bid this out about two weeks ago and the, we had three contractors who bid on the project. The low bidder was Broom Ball Construction, which is out of, uh, Arcanum, Ohio, with a low bid of a hundred, or eight hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. Uh, the second low bidder was around here at thirty-four thousand, six hundred. And the third was around nine hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred. Broom Ball Construction has performed other projects in the city in the past. They worked on the Aquatic Center building and I think they're doing the firehouse, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, that is their building section of their construction company. They also do utility work and street work. Uh, I had worked with them about ten years ago on a project, so I was kind of familiar with them back then. I would like to award it to them. The not-to-exceed amount of this would be nine hundred and twenty thousand. Funding for this project is, uh, there's fifty-seven percent of the funding is through MVRPC's, uh, Surface Transportation Program, which is state and federal funding. Um, the remainder forty-three percent will be funded by permissive tax, uh, gas money that we receive through Montgomery County each year. We receive about a hundred and fifty thousand from them. We currently have about a million dollars in the account. So, we'll be using about, um, this bag, in this case, about three hundred and fifty thousand to this project. We will be using, I believe it's Street Capital Fund on this that is then reimbursed after the project's done. So, the whole project will be covered by these funds. Um, and we are asking for this to be an emergency if we could, uh, for a few reasons. We have ODOT deadlines on this project. This has been a five-year project to, for the funding. And, um, we, actually, ODOT wanted us to bid this at the end of the last year, but we extended it to hold them off to the beginning of the year because we didn't want to be that long a time period for the contract. Most contractors don't wait, want to wait that long. The, uh, we, so we want to get started on a contract so they can get started. There is a six to seven-month completion time on this project, so we want to make sure it gets done before winter so that all the paving gets done before, uh, asphalt plants close. So, um, that's what we have right now and we, like I said, we are asking for this as an emergency.
Okay. Six, seven months and how much of the road will be closed or will there be detours required?
Uh, there, I think there'll be, there's one area of the roadway there is, I believe, a hump in the road that has to be cut down and they will have to close the road for hopefully a short period of time. I'm hoping a couple of weeks at the most. The rest of the project, I think, will be kept open, uh, with either flaggers or they'll have, hopefully have enough room to keep two lanes open on one side. But I think it mainly be down to one lane with flagging, similar to what we did at Taylorsville.
Mr. Shaw.
Hypothetical situation here, Russ. If this is passed at an emergency on Monday night's meeting, when does Broom Ball, um, I believe I pronounced it correctly, um, when are they slated to start construction?
I believe we have to go through, um, uh, pre-construction meetings and think, well, one meeting for that. Uh, I think they plan on starting at the end, probably at the end of April.
The reason I say that is if this is passed at Monday's night's meeting with no emergency, we waive the second, third readings. That's putting it out to April twenty-seventh, which is roughly about the same timeframe that you just said.
Yeah, actually, in order to, uh, to qualify and make the award for the contract and set up those pre-construction meetings, we need to actually get the approval to award it. And, uh, we wouldn't be able to take action, um, until the effective date of the approval. So, in effect, that April twenty-seventh, then, by the time pre-construction meetings start and then they mobilize and get ready, that pushes it back literally a month.
They also have to order the materials, catch base and things like that, which take, you know, a while to manufacture. They don't do order, any ordering until the contract's signed.
Thank you for the explanation.
Um, mayor, MVRPC, they really go out many years. They're right now, when you go to the meetings, there are projects that are out for twenty-five years. So, we're very lucky because the funding keeps getting, you know, slower and slower coming in. So, this has been a five-year proj, hasn't it?
Yeah, the actual application was a five-year.
Right. So, this is very critical for us to follow through on this because MVRPC, that's where we get our funding. And so, there's criteria you have to follow and there's steps you take to even be qualified to get the funding. And so, I'm just trying to explain that, how it works. And so, it is critical when they do come forward because, like you said... you said, he has to do the work, and he can't control that, because it's all federal funding that comes, it's, it's a, it's a big deal to get all this funding, so I'm just letting you know that it's, it's how it works, you know, it's, it's a federal funding, and, and Russ has to go there all the time, I go to the monthly meetings, and I can show you their, uh, table, how it's funded, and what all the projects are funded in the whole area, and how far out they are, you know, and you can get an idea of, of what it looks like, just for your own, you know, so you know what's going on.
And, and if I could, one other thing, um, this is, like I said, been a five-year process, we've notified all the homeowners out there, we've talked to almost all of them, either that, or they've been appro, approached for right-of-way purchases, all of them know about this project, it's not anything that's gonna be a surprise to anybody, so I don't, you know, if you're waiting on citizen comments for any reason, I don't think you're gonna have any.
Mr. Shaw.
And by any stretch, I don't wanna make the topic of my conversation that I'm having an issue with the financing portion, or the fact that MVRPC's, yeah, it's, it's strictly just the emergency piece, I think this is a great project, I, I think, you know, we have the funds and the budget to, to do this, it's, we, everything's appropriated, um, you know, I mean, it's, it's in black and white, that was my only question too, that, not the fact of anything about MVRPC. Now, now that you bring that up, it's a great question, um, since you do attend those MVRPC meetings, and you, and you do have some of that information, would you be able to kind of maybe share that, uh, information with us? No, I, I, I understand, I didn't know, if maybe just from your point of view, I understand that the minutes come through and things like that, but, you know, I mean, you're, you're going to those meetings, maybe, you know, and your official comments or something like that, just hit a couple of the key topics during that meeting?
They'll be far and few between, because we don't have that much funding.
No, it, that might be something else we research, I'm gonna use that term, "research."
Well, everybody gets their share, and like I said, there's a point system that you go by, and everything is quantified by the points, how they grade it and everything, and we have nothing to do with that, that's all done at a different level.
I just appreciate the discussion, thank you.
Okay, so we'll see this on the agenda, we'll expect the, waive the second, third readings, and it'll be emergency legislation. All right, moving on to traffic signal, Route Two-O-Two and Carriage Trails Boulevard.
Uh, yes, this is for the, uh, bid award for a new traffic signal at Old Fort Pike and Carriage Trails Boulevard. Uh, have discussed this before, we did go through two traffic studies, one in two thousand and ten, and then one last year. Uh, the second, the second one last year did warrant, uh, a new signal at that location, and it had been approved through ODOT for that. Um, we, um, did contract with TEC Engineering, and they'd finished the design on that, on the project, and it had, that also has been approved through ODOT. Um, we did bid this out, uh, last week, or the week before, and, uh, project low bidder on this one was Banzel Construction, which is out of Fairfield, Ohio, with a low bid of ninety-five thousand, sixty dollars and forty-five cents. Uh, the second low bidder was about a hundred and one thousand, five hundred, and the third was around a hundred and six thousand, two hundred, so they're all within about eleven thousand dollars. Um, Banzel Construction's not done any work in the city, uh, but I did call Fairborn and Beaver Creek, and they've done big projects for those cities, and they both gave them good references. Uh, so I would like to award it to Banzel Construction, uh, this with a not-to-exceed amount of a hundred and thirty thousand. Um, this is in a Tiff District, and, uh, the city, um, we, we will fund the project through the state cap, uh, the Street Capital Fund, and then reimburse it through Tiff money. Uh, if you have further questions on that, you'll have to ask Jim Bell on that one, but, uh, that's how he wants to, to, uh, take care of it. Uh, this is non-emergency legislation and can go to, uh, second reading. Uh, we can go through all three readings, um, I would prefer, if we could possibly pass it after the second reading, that, I leave that up to you, I can't wait to the full third reading. The reason I wanna do that is because, once we award the contract, there is another two- or three-month period of waiting to, um, uh, manufacture the equipment that goes out there, so it just extends the period of time before it gets built.
Counsel. Okay, so, uh-
Go, and Monday, we'll have the first reading, Planfest on the second reading.
And, uh, I, I guess, uh, I'll talk about, uh, the original carriage trails discussion we had a long time ago. Ours, being a long time. Uh, you know, this is a, a cost that is directly attributable to doing the development, but I've not seen any of these types of costs in the analysis that we have for why we should go forward, or not go forward with the project, or fund, or what kind of appropriation, supplemental appropriation, or supplement we should make to there. And we know that we have road costs like this that show up, we know that we have police and fire services that, uh, will have to be dedicated, because we're putting houses up in that area. Just things that I think that, uh, we should see quantified to offset some of the positive, uh, numbers that we see often, 'cause there's obviously other costs that don't get captured, and some of the things that we have to make our decision points on, and here's just one of those examples.
Mr. Schaefer.
Right, good, Mr. Mayor, just in all fairness, this, this light issue, uh, really emanated with the Benchmark Project, so it's just, so it's just carried forward with Carriage Trails. Now, your, your question's the same, it doesn't change, and, you know, it's perfectly appropriate, but it's not something that was generated by the Carriage Trails Project, it's, it's actually a carryover from way back in the beginning.
Yeah, certainly.
But it's the same question, same issue, I'm not-
Certainly is, it's, it's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that goes toward an offset of the so many millions of dollars that we get in benefits, but I just think that they should be captured. I'm sure it's not the only traffic light that's going to go in there, because we're putting twelve hundred houses up that way.
I was gonna say, this traffic light was actually installed eight, eight years ago, and then was taken down.
Yeah.
It was, it was not ODOT warranted at the time, so it was taken down.
Right. Uh, okay, and that's just, uh, one of those points that I, uh, make, uh, traffic signal, moving on to the next agenda item, energy aggregation. Mr. Lyons.
Uh, yes, in, uh, light of Issue One passing, um, and finding on Thursday that this was going to be an agenda item, I reached out to our city manager on Friday, uh, to ask him about, uh, the way forward, uh, some of the, uh, items that we need to be, uh, working through. I know we have, uh, two hearings that will be eventually coming up, uh, that would come, I'm assuming, after the, uh, awarding of contracts for energy aggregation, and then, um, you know, some other items, and then possibly a timetable, and the city manager said he'd, uh, have some discussion topics on the way forward, just to, uh, get the ball rolling, and that, so to speak, but at the same time, a lot more of that detail will be forthcoming, uh, as we just found out last, uh, Tuesday, that, um, Energy Aggregation Issue One passed citywide.
That, that sums it up, yeah, we, uh, we're, we're seeking, uh, the best method to go through and identify what's needed in an RFP, Russ has already, uh, begun reaching out and, uh, looking for some, uh, some samples and identifying, um, what we need to put that together, and when we have that, we'll be bringing that here to get a resolution to send that out, and as, uh, Mr. Lyons said, those details are forthcoming and currently in progress.
Mr. Shaw.
I would like to suggest, and, and I did bring this up numerous times during the topics of discussion of energy aggregation, um, I would like to have a sit-down meeting, um, and make sure that our website, when we do get to move forward, we'll be able to have that algorithm that I've explained, where residents can go in there and put that information on their bill, and get that real-time information when we do go through those appropriate steps. I just would like to go ahead and kinda kick off and make sure that our website team and/or impact group can help us along that method, because I believe the more information that we can help residents gather, detailed information, and I believe that would be a good step in doing that, where residents can go in there and put their real-time information in there, and see what their savings is gonna be, once our details start rolling in, but by building that algorithm out, is gonna give, give us a huge head start, so when we start having these hearings and these town hall meetings and ward meetings and things like that, we can make that a, a topic of discussion, where people can go on and do that, or we can show them in real time. I think that's gonna alleviate a lot of misinformation or confusion as we start rolling out our program. Thank you.
Mr. Lyons.
Uh, Mr. Schomer, uh, with the detailed list way forward, uh, the items we need to, um, put into place, and then a possible timetable, do you anticipate, um, staff being ready for that in the next two weeks, or would you need probably in, coming back to the work session in about a month, or is that something that you'll need to evaluate in the next coming week or so?
It's kinda Russ's, uh-
Um, I believe our first step is to get, uh, a consultant in line here that helps us out. Um, we can go through the process, uh, requests for proposals from consultants for this, uh, I did contact Sydney, they just went through this, and, uh, they did give me a copy of their requests for qualifications, which we can model ours after. Uh, I think that's probably the first step of what we need to do, or City of Troy went straight ahead and hired a consultant without going through the process, but I think we probably wanna go through the proposals, and that's gonna take a little bit of a time, once we put that out there, you're gonna have to wait a few weeks at least for that, to come back, and then make a decision here to what consultant we wanna use, and I don't know if that process is gonna take, bringing them in, talk to them at work sessions, uh, that'll be up to Counsel, how I wanna handle that.
Okay, and so can we have an update periodically at our next work session?
Absolutely, yeah.
And that would, and I mean, obviously, staff would have more time than what you've had since Tuesday, and there's not a whole lot of planning that can be done until the community weighs in. Um, Bonnie, I did ask Tony, um, as this comes on to future agendas, uh, to continue to add the background information, uh, it's something that the mayor and I had discussed on our conversation over the telephone on Thursday, that I said I would go ahead and, uh, ask Tony to do, and since you're in his place, uh, would that, uh, make sure that includes the legislation and, uh, the topics that we've discussed forward, and any new additional information that can be put on the packet at the top, and then someone can read down as far as they'd like to? Just make sure that gets, uh, passed on to Tony, I mentioned that in the meeting, as I said I would. Thank you.
Mr. Shaw.
One brief thing, and I think I understood what Mr. Lyons was saying, but I, I must take it a step farther, I would say we almost leave this, at this point in time, on our work session agenda as a roll-in item, you know, not take it off whatsoever, that way every time the agenda packet goes out, if there's any, any update whatsoever, that's an added to roll-in item, so once we hypothetically get to the breaking point where we're at second reading at City Council for the whole discussion details, somebody, anybody can go into that packet and see from day one till the end of time, that, everything that we discussed and everything that's in there, so it's completely transparent, completely open, and everything's there. I think, I, I think that's where you were going with that, and I, I think that's a great idea.
And I'm fine, I think that's a good idea, yes.
All right, uh, city water softening.
Uh, I guess I can go ahead with that. Um, we did, uh, talk about this last meeting, and, uh, at that time, I was trying to go ahead with a, um, a consultant, Arcadis, um, that I had gotten a, uh, a, uh, I'm sorry, their proposal to do the work, and at the last meeting, we talked about it, and it was the fact that they, there was twenty-three thousand, eight hundred to do, uh, a study, to update the study from two thousand and ten, to give us new costs and any other new information that would come up for that. Um, the mayor, you had asked whether we could check on the fact, uh, if softening the water would have any effect on our water system. Um, since then, I did talk to three different cities, uh, one was Tip City, it was Kevin Price from the, who's the manager of the, of the water department, uh, he did say, he, at the time, they did it, I think, about eight years ago, and he was there at the time, but said he had no, there was no problems when they switched over to softening. He says you have to do it at a small, a short rate, I mean, a, uh, you taper it off and do it slowly, is basically what you have to do. Um, I also contacted the city of Pickerington and, uh, West Carrollton, they also put, uh, softening online within the last, well, they did about, both of them, within the last five to ten years, and they both said the same thing, you just have to watch the pH levels and the alkalinity, raphalinity of the water, and, uh, as long as that's watched, you, they haven't had any problems with water main breaks or anything like that, so, uh, I would still like to go ahead with this study if, uh, Counsel wants us to do that, it doesn't take legislation, since it's under twenty-five thousand.
Okay, and this study here is how much of the cost and what would need to be done in order to upgrade the system? As opposed to whether the citizens are, are for it or against it?
Yeah, this is a, uh, this is just a, a, an update to the existing water softening study that validates current information, I think the last one was in two thousand and eight, um, and I do not believe that it would involve an additional citizen survey.
If I read it correctly. That's a different study. The study that we're talking about today is a study that will talk about hardware changes and the different types of, uh, systems that we could install, and how it, and, and cost directly for our system.
Right, it'd be, they look at the three types of soft, softening, but they're probably gonna come back with the same recommendation on the softening, is what he said.
Right.
Um, it's the same type Tip City uses. Um, it's more of an update mainly for cost, um, at the time, the first one came out, I think it was like six or seven million, seven million, I believe, to do this, and how much it would cost a resident, you know, if we raised the water rates-
Right.
-to help pay for it.
Right.
This will give us new numbers to know what the exact cost of this will be, and they'll, they'll look at any, if there's any new type of systems out there, but I think mo, most of them have stayed the same since two thousand and ten.
Right, and, uh, potential discharge and how, and where that would go and cost.
Right, it's, yeah, how you discharge it from the water plant, since we're near the river, it shouldn't be, EPA allows you to discharge the, the backwash, I guess, water to back to the river.
Counsel, Mr. Campbell.
Are we gonna get, um, an opinion or some insight from the water company as it relates to the work we're doing with the survey of the system and so on?
Yeah, uh, obviously, we certainly should, yes, how would you recommend that?
Pro, probably your company has even went through, uh, a system that's been softened.
Yeah, um, I'm sure that there are companies out there, I think the last time that we all went through this, we had someone come from-
I'm sorry, that's you, the one, so.
Oh. I said, the last time that we went through this, I think we had someone come in from another area, and I've already talked to my company about the possibility of having someone come again, um, not real sure who that would be at this point, but if you wanted, I can start working on trying to see if I can get somebody.
Would you recommend that?
Okay, I'm sorry, and, and what would they do?
They would, they would just be, offer their information on what, you know, the process was, but I think he was probably the person that turned them on to the idea of using the membrane, uh, reverse osmosis versus lime softening soda, that soda softening, that type of thing, so they would just offer information based on, uh, past experience with changing over, just like what Russ checked with the locals.
Okay, and I guess that question would be then, uh, do you have somebody in-house that could provide the same, you know, if you would just augment what Artis is doing?
Ours are mostly, our folks are operators, and I would prefer to have an expert's opinion, they don't operate a water softening treat, plant, so they would just be offering you what they think and what they've heard, and, you know, obviously, some of them have heard that water main breaks do increase with water softening, that's not a reason not to do it, even if it is the truth, but I don't know that it is or it isn't, because I don't have that inform, I don't, I'm not that, I'm not an expert in that field.
Okay.
And Mayor, my only reason of suggesting this is, they are a partner of ours, they're a resource that's available, and I, I think it would be a wise decision to involve them- They're a resource that's available, and I, I think it would be a wise decision to involve them upfront early on.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, and part of that would also be having them evaluate what components of our current agreement that is done, 'cause obviously, there's a different level of workload and some additional stuff, what do we take on? So we would also, part of this process have asked them to evaluate the increased cost, and that would factor that in as the overall.
Yeah, it'll change the scope of the contract, and, you know, we do know definitely that there'll be additional manpower necessary to operate the plant. There'd be additional maintenance, because those membrane filters have to be changed out periodically, just like a filter in your home, you know, that kinda thing. So, but what those costs are, I don't know, but some, I can get someone who can, you know, put something hopefully together for you like that.
Yeah, absolutely, and, yes.
Did you wanna do that prior to going ahead with the proposal?
Well, I would think that that would be incorporated in the report from, from Arcean.
So it's okay to go ahead with the proposal, twenty-three thousand, okay? And part of that proposal, he will come in-
And speak with-
Speak with us.
Suez.
After he does the revisions to the-
Well, I would think that if he's going to quote us four fifty or six dollars a bill, that it would, it would include what it would cost Suez to, to help. I mean, I, I mean, I, I would assume, I would assume any cost that he, he says it would be on the bill would include any increase that we would expect from-
You're talking about maintenance or whatever in the future?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, it should be on it, yes.
Right, so. Well, okay.
But to Tom's point, it would be the cost of the system for each resident and the maintenance.
Right.
The additional maintenance cost for each resident.
And that's how much the increase on the water bill would have to take?
And that's what we would like to see when you come back and give us the presentation, to be all-inclusive.
Now, they told me if we go ahead with this, it'll be about an eight-week process for him to update the study. So we could bring it back at that point and have somebody scheduled from Suez to come in also.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, but I guess the point out of this conversation is that in the, in that eight-week process, they should be talking to Suez-
Yes, I'll make sure-
Almost immediately.
I'll make sure he gets in contact with the person.
So at the end of that process, the presentation includes both-
Correct.
-the consultant and our water utility.
Right.
Have we ever approached the city of Dayton to see what it would take, what infrastructure to tie in and buy water from that city? That city of Dayton, the city of Dayton is one of their waterlands, national award. They have great water, and they have got their waterfall crazy to down to a fine heart. It is already softened. Has that ever been asked or proposed? Or surely it's cheaper than multi-million dollar setting up? I don't even know that the possibility, that has, have we ever approached them to buy water to hook up to their, to hook up to their system and purchase water from them?
They've approached us-
Okay.
-a few years ago. And the problem with doing that is that it can be done, but you're now under their rates. And they can charge us whatever they want. We have the third lowest, the survey came out today, we have the third lowest water rates in the whole area out of thirty or forty cities. Also, the fact that we just built a plant ten years ago, you eliminate the plant, all that money you put into that plant would be out of the waste, basically. I think we wanna be in control of our water. And if we soften the water, you should be able to get just as good quality as you have in need.
And, and the, the thing is, we- I don't know, I don't know.
Actually, we, we have received the same national awards on a regular basis, and I know council members attend with us every year for the, for the water festival. And us in Dayton are probably the longest-standing two communities producing water mainly. A lot of it is, is similar wellfields and very, very close proximity. So we have the same, same awards and same protection and same quality.
And I know this because I woke up coffee in the morning, from the castle, Huber Heights, I saw a whole layer of scum on my, uh, cup of coffee. I would just say that I would not discount, yes, we've got, you know, we built it ten years ago. But hey, Huber Heights, we like to aggregate everything. Why not re-approach the city and see if we can lock in a thirty-five-year contract of something else? Especially if we're talking about tens of millions of dollars for a holding system that we have to retrain, increase cost. We're gonna have to hire experts to run this new equipment.
All right, thank you, thank you for your input.
And that was this, I'd love to-
Okay, you don't get to take the meeting over.
I'd like to hear, thank you very much.
Okay, but anyway, I think in our discussion a month or so ago, we did task you to, to reengage to see what those costs were, and that still should be on your to-do list as well, if I remember correctly.
They approached Dayton for water?
Yeah, as one of the alternatives to, to this, I don't recall that. I'm sure it was, it's just a, as part of the discussion that, that we would, we would look into that again and see what the, okay, well, I, I know that we, we didn't think that it was going to go very far in the discussion, but I'm, I'm certain that that was one of the, one of the avenues that we would at least look at to see what those costs would be, and, and, but, okay, Mr. Campbell.
Russ, did you say that they've reached out to you, meaning the city of Dayton? Couple of years ago?
Yeah, it was about four years ago, I believe. They've tried, I think, a couple of times prior to that, but-
What, what would it cost for them to put a proposal in, right? If they're reaching out to us?
I can find that out and see if they'll do it.
If the cost wasn't astronomical, why wouldn't we check that box and know that's not a good deal or it is a good deal?
That's fine, but like I said, in the future, they'll set the rates. We can set our own rate.
Well, to her point, if you enter into a thirty-five-year contract, they'll, they'll set the rates for thirty-five years.
Okay.
And I'm asking, I'm not, I'm not the expert here, is that true?
Yeah, do a contract with them.
You might find out, they won't enter into a contract for more than two years, but you might find out they'll do it for thirty-five years.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay.
Mr. Shaw.
I know for some conversations I've had with the mayor of Trotwood, Trotwood who buys their water from the city of Dayton, coming directly from the mayor and residents of Trotwood, they, and this is coming directly from them, and I can quote this, have been getting price gouged from the city of Dayton for quite some time. As a matter of fact, the mayor of Trotwood and her administration has actually been in conversations, and I know we haven't got it set up yet, but have engaged in the thought of taking a tour of our water plant to see what we do. And I believe that kind of outreach education with other communities, because we do own our own water, that's generating revenue for our city. We protect our water. I know there's been some discussions with the city of Dayton about lessening water restrictions and things of that nature. And I believe we need to be very cautious on how we move forward with that. But from my aspect, we have cities that are approaching us, saying, hey, I'm getting price gouged by the city of Dayton. What can Huber Heights do for us? I think that might be a topic of conversation that we start reaching out and seeing where we're at with these other cities, when we're having administrations and mayors from other cities wanna take a tour of our water plant. Maybe they wanna do something in their own hometown, or maybe that we can strike a deal. I think there's additional conversations that can be had to, to your, your comment. But I think that's, again, where the creative discussion can come into play, where we're at. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell.
Yeah, you know, I couldn't agree with Richard more, but I would ask, is their agreement something you could get us a copy of? I'm sure we could.
Be more than happy to reach out tomorrow morning and get that copy of that. As a matter of fact, the city of Trotwood just promoted their, their new city manager. So I'll reach out to Quincy and get that information directly from him.
And, and I'm not advocating that we- What was that?
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely not advocating we not use our own water. But to her point, if, if we haven't looked at it, how do we know?
I'd be more than happy to get that information, and I believe I may have a, another city who may indulge us in that conversation as well. I don't wanna put them out on Front Street, but I'd be more than happy to reach out to them as well and bring that information back to our next work session.
And you have put Trotwood out on Front Street?
Oh, I, I put Trotwood so far out on Front Street, they're in the same car with me.
In addition, in addition to getting their contract with Dayton, can we begin some dialogue with them?
This, the-
What we could do?
Sure, the mayor of Trotwood has actually reached out to myself and Mr. Otto, and I know there's been some email traffic between us and the water company to try to arrange a water tour already. I know some scheduling conflicts occurred. We're still engaged in those conversations, and they are still willing to have that conversation with us.
And Rob, is that something that you could take the reins and, and make happen?
Yeah, I mean, certainly, Mr. Shaw can, can contact, and I can follow whatever information he has, and-
Well, if they're wanting a tour.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, when they, when they want it, we'll, we'll get it set up, sure. Pam is always willing.
Yeah, there were some scheduling conflicts on the side of Trotwood, not us. So, and I, they had gone through some processes with their city manager, and I think, and she's been having some trips. So I, I think we're still trying to get that scheduled out. But I will reach out to her tomorrow morning via telephone and get this scheduled up.
And the contract.
And the contract, yes.
Now, that's pretty good discussion.
Yes, it was.
I'd just like to make, I'm glad you brought that up, because Dayton did lower the restrictions on their business community, because the people in the business community wanted to have some more stuff brought in, and so it would hurt the water a little bit more. They said it doesn't, but we had a lot of concern, we did not like it when they voted for that. It was a great concern to us, but we are upstream from them, so that's a good thing. You know, it has to really go bad for us to get it, and we have such a wonderful quality. I know it's hard water, I understand what you're saying, I use it all the time. I mean, I guess I'm getting used to it, I have a water softener now, but, anyway, I think it is a- we have great water and we have an abundance of it, and so I'm sort of leery of who we give it to or give it out to, because when you see other communities, all of a sudden, they have overextended, and now they have a shortage of water. And it isn't that I don't think it's good to share, but I think it's something we have to be aware of, because water is such a wonderful, I mean, it's what you need. And there's communities all over the United States that have a lack of water. And so I really hope we look really close at this, how we move forward with it. That's all I, I'm talking about.
Mr. Campbell.
You know, I believe we acquired the water utility in nineteen ninety-five, is that right, Pam? And, and your company has managed it from day one? And maybe our rates or our overall cost have went down, not up? Okay, and you've done excellent. I mean, we, we have an excellent relationship as a public-private entity. And I'm not suggesting anything different than that. But to her point, if there's another option, and she stood up in a public meeting and brought that up, it, it warrants to look at. And Richard, if you're talking Trotwood, the only suggestion I would make is, since that would have to be a policy decision, maybe copy us in on the emails and bring us in a little sooner.
I'd be more than happy to, and it's just that you brought that up, because these conversations have been going on for quite some time, and we've been trying to get the city of Trotwood in here, I would almost say since we took the trip to Flint, Michigan. So, I mean, topics of water has been ongoing between officials from the city of Huber Heights and the surrounding cities. And I think at this point in time, it's time that we bring them out to the light, and, and we really start moving on some action. And, and to your point, these conversations are moving, and, and we will make some headway.
That's just what we're wanting to do. You know, I want, we want to know that the options have been looked at so that when you all make the decision, we know that the options have been looked at and that you all make us aware. You know, so that when, that when you, except of making a decision and you're telling us, you're gonna make a decision, and we know what we've looked at, and that's gonna be okay.
I can tell you right off the bat, my position, I don't know how much you've learned about my background or about me sitting here.
If there's a decision that comes out of this chair, I've researched every option there possibly could, and up one wall and down another, and there's some people in this audience that can vouch for that. So if there's questions to be asked, I'm definitely gonna ask them, and I appreciate that, yes, yes. Yes, and Mr. Campbell, I will definitely get on that first thing in the morning.
And in nineteen ninety-five, when we acquired the water utility, it was from a privately-held company, and it went to the voters. So the voters voted for us to take over the water utility. So, you know, I think we're staying in concert with this discussion as well.
Can I add a few things? I'm looking at the rate study that came out today. City of Trotwood, their water and sewer rate cost is, this is per quarter? Per quarter is three hundred and forty-four dollars. Huber Heights is a hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Well, we can make a lot of profit.
The other thing I wanna say is if we soften the water, some of the cloudiness you see in the water, the, sometimes you see some particles in it and things, a lot of that will go away. That's part of the good thing of softening. And the other thing is if you buy city wa, Dayton, uh, city of Dayton's water, you still have to have a company to maintain our water system, even if it's not the plant, you have the water pipes, so there'd be cost on that.
And you'll include all that when you bring back the different options?
Uh, okay, thank you. One thing, though, that, uh, it's the Miami Valley Water Conservancy that- Right, that, that would have changed the, uh, industries that could operate within the watershed out there, and that would affect us. I mean, it wasn't Dayton, it wasn't really Dayton that decided that certain industries could move into-
I believe it was city of Dayton.
Was it city of Dayton?
It was.
Oh, really? So they did it, they did it, you know that, really?
And they have, what I was concerned with at the time they did that is Cargill just being down the road from all of our wells, a lot of our wells.
Oh, yeah, okay, all right, my, well, there you go. Thank you. I had, I had, uh, that wrong in my head, so thanks. And so that's that. Moving on to, so, going forward. Right, anybody not, wanna go forward with, with the study? All right, we'll see that in eight weeks or thereabouts.
Including all the other items that they're gonna research and bring to us-
Well-
-that we talked about?
Yes, and actually, you know, the, some of the other things can be presented before that as well. You know, if we get a, if we get an offer from city of Dayton before that, we certainly, uh, certainly can entertain that prior to the study coming out. All right, moving on to city travel requests on there, and just to keep with the policy that we've implemented a year or so ago, travel requests are just going to be for council members and staff that I approve, just be talked about in public. And you'll see we have two members missing tonight, because they're attending some introductory training about learning how to conduct businesses in the city. So we can see some of the agenda items that they were, they were attending at this time. And it's basically put on by the auditor of the state, so that they can learn more about city policies and such. And with that, we'll go to board and commission appointments.
City staff is recommending the appointment of Robert Deame to the property maintenance review board for a term ending December thirty-first, twenty sixteen.
Okay, council discussion. Tom's good? All right, so we'll see that on, uh, on Monday. And, uh, moving on to charter review commission. Okay, so, uh, we do have a charter, charter review, uh, commission underway. We've received some of, uh, it was established a couple meetings ago, the makeup of it and with that, uh, we've had four of city staff volunteer, uh, to be part of that commission and, uh, those members are listed. Is there any discussion on, Mr. Shaw?
Having seen this, um, this is actually gonna be a conversation I was gonna have with Tony, but when I seen this and the packet come out, I was like, I think in the short amount of time and the amount of people that we have here, I think is pretty astonishing. And I think that's a good selection to go for. Um, as far as I'm concerned, in order to make sure that we hit our deadline, um, I would like to, uh, to ask, uh, my colleagues that we can start these interview processes as early as next week, um, maybe start with staff and then when Tony gets back in office, um, maybe the end of week, uh, end of next week, we can start the interview processes for the residents, um, so that we can get the ball rolling on this. Um, I think this is gonna be a great opportunity. Um, it looks like, uh, we've got a great selection of city staff and a, uh, great selection of residents, so I, I think at this point in time, we just move forward with the interview process and, uh, get the ball rolling.
Okay. And do we recall the makeup of the commission? How many city staff have we identified?
Thinking, thinking of nine.
Oh, nine, but we'll-
I believe so. I believe so, I think.
Oh, correct. It's three members of city council, two staff members and four residents. And that's, that's built in there, um, that that commission would be built upon. Uh, so in that meantime, we'd also have to figure out what three members of city council, um, would sit on this charter review commission as well.
Correct. Okay. All right, uh, and the recommendation is, uh, to select the two staff in the next week?
I, I would like to and I'm just gonna throw out a date, let's say Wednesday of next week, if we can, uh, um, get the applicants, um, the staff applicants together and then have those interviews, maybe next Wednesday, um, and that way that gives Tony enough time when he comes back on Monday to get with those residents and see when he can get those, um, interviews done.
Okay. And for the, uh, citizens, when do you expect?
I would like to, you know, see the citizens maybe, you know, I'd plan by end of next week as when we can get those interviews underway. Um, and as far as council members being a part of this committee, um, I'd be more than happy, um, since this is something I've kind of championed from day one of getting some things updated and changed and out to the ballot in November, um, I'd be more than happy to throw my name in, uh, for that. Um, and if anybody else, I, I know, uh, um, Council Member Smith and Council Member Otto is not present here today and if we need to table that conversation, we can, uh, for that aspect.
Yeah, I, I think that's better with a full council. Any other discussion from, uh, council as far as date planning, Wednesday look good for time schedule to propose for the first? Yes, no, maybe?
No.
No, Wednesday's not good?
Oh, yeah, I'll be out of town too.
Okay. Uh, what would, uh, okay. And so you can't do it at all next week?
Yep, I'll be out of town also.
Can we play it on the, the week after that, um, maybe do, um, a Wednesday for staff and then, um, wait for Tony to come back and fi- figure out when we can set the residents up? And if we have to do daytime and maybe some evening interviews to kind of spread, you know, separate that up, I'm sure some of these residents are available during the day, vice versa, some of them are during the night. I'd like to kind of split that up a little bit. I know with my work schedule and your work schedule, that's a little difficult to do. Yeah.
Now, if you want to go in the summertime, I'll, I'll, I'll commit right now, but, uh, yeah, I'm out of town on spring break and, uh, my work schedule doesn't permit me to, um, take those kinds of breaks during the day, so, but I can be here three o'clock in the afternoon.
I'd be more happy to, we can, I, I'm free anytime after three-thirty, I can, I can get freed up, so, um, if we have to start at three-thirty or what have you, um, but, uh, I mean, just the emphasis is on, on, you know, getting this process moving, um, and get those interviews done, um, at least next Wednesday, if we can at least set the, uh, not next Wednesday, the Wednesday after next, that we can at least set the staff interviews and then we can work with Tony when he gets back in with the residents and things of that nature.
Hmm. Okay. Now, would it be out of question that the rest of the council could proceed without you next week for the staff?
Well, I'd be without seven of us.
Oh, two of you, yes.
Well, I, I'd like to be in the interviews myself.
In the evenings, I could do it, but during the day, I couldn't.
No, I mean, next week.
Next week, in the evenings, I could do it, but not during the day.
Yeah, they would be in the evenings next week.
Okay, well, he talked about in the afternoon.
Oh, I would, I assume that they-
Well, and to that point as well, Mr. Lyons saying that he's not gonna be available at all next week, I, I do believe that this is a, a very important process for our city and I, I believe it does warrant that all members of council be present during these interviews, uh, so I, I will not have any objection of moving that back another week to make sure that everybody's present, if, if that is the wish of the rest of the members of council here. Um, I just, I don't think that, I, I think these interviews need to be done quickly, um, but they also need to be done efficiently.
Yeah, we just know the timeline and if we-
Correct.
We take a month, picking, picking members, then that's a month that's not underway, so, so-
And what you're recommending is half a month, two weeks, right?
I would dedicate an entire week of vacation to get this done, so-
But what you're recommending is not next week, but the following week.
Correct. That Wednesday.
Two weeks, not a month.
Correct.
So, we're not, you're not even proposing delaying a month.
That would give me too much of a headache.
Anything going on on Saturday the ninth that would be unavailable for you?
I'm, I'm waiting for the, the tenth. But, uh, but no, again, that Wednesday, I think we, we lock that in to get the staff in and, 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 and done with, um, and then we can, when Tony gets back.
And if we pick that date tentatively, Janelle and, and, uh, Glenn isn't here-
I will go ahead and speak for Mr. Otto, um, because, uh, his schedule, as he's mentioned several times, is wide open. I don't, I don't see him having an issue with that, that time, um, and if he does, I'll, I'll take full blame for that. As for Mrs. Smith, I can't speak for her schedule.
So, if we have Tony tentatively set it up for a week from Wednesday and then he could just reach out to each of us?
Okay.
And if we can do it earlier, Tony could, uh, contact us and try to get it scheduled even earlier, so.
Okay, all right. And moving on to, um, liquor permit.
Um, the submarine houses, um, these are liquor permits and, uh, Police Division and Fire Division had no objections to their request.
All right, so is it, will this be a new liquor permit or?
It's a new one.
All right. Also, and we'll see it on Monday then. Excellent. Uh, action item tracking form out there, uh, I guess I'll talk to Tony about this 'cause there's a few items on here that had due dates on the second, uh, let me see, comprehensive city parks plan detailing reviews, have we, what have we talked about? There's a couple YMCA things in that action items. Have you looked at them?
Yes, I, I know the one about whether the Y is good for the Parks Director. I think that was done in person. I told Tony, "Go ahead and check that one off," when Ms. Fox came and I think there was a pretty lengthy discussion regarding that. A couple others on there that, uh, really just need checked off and, uh, I'll follow up with Tony and make sure that that's updated regarding comprehensive parks. There's, I mean, that was part of the budget. We've, we worked with Parks and Rec Board, we identified pickleball, uh, we've got that plan and, you know, that's all, that's all been discussed and talked about. I don't know how much more that we want to do other than just consider that a, uh, um, you know, on, ongoing discussion, um, whether there's that broad of a topic to have a due date and an action item, that's, it's a pretty broad thing, a comprehensive Parks and Recreation master plan per se, um, that's a pretty broad topic.
Oh, we, and Mr. Campbell, this was, this was your request? For, uh, comprehensive plan detailing revenue streams and expenditures, uh, for the parks and, and with a priority list. So, do you have any input on whether we should sign this offer or expecting anything more?
Uh, I think, Rob, we were trying to determine what revenue we had coming in from the parks, rentals and such, and Ms. Fox was gonna help provide that. Has she done that?
Yes, yes, we, uh, we submitted that, I think the number, top of my head, like twenty-four thousand, I think, or something to that.
Okay.
So, I think all we're lacking then mayor is just having that as an item-
Okay.
-on, on an agenda so we can then start to plan. Can I broaden from there just a little bit?
All right.
Mr. Schomer, you, you had asked all of us to provide you a list of items we would like to see accomplished in the city and, you know, I turned mine in and, and I apologize if I've missed where you sent that hack out and put together a list, but have you done that or are you going to do that?
Yes, I, I was hoping that we, um, we'd get a complete list. Um, it's not complete as of yet. Um, was hoping to, uh, to get input from, um, from, from everyone and, uh, make sure that opportunities for any of the, the ranking, um, so, um, I wanted that rather than having it not reflect the, in, um, the entire body, if that makes sense.
Just fill the five.
Yes, yes, and, um-
Ward five.
Oh, Ward five, Ward five. So, you're waiting on Ward five to submit their list?
Um, in, in a-
I don't think about it.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we, we haven't talked, we haven't talked about it yet. Yes, we haven't talked about it yet.
So, as soon as Ward five turns the list in, I believe, I remember you were gonna take all of our items and categorize them or prioritize-
Yes, I have a different number of, of people who have prioritized versus the number of people that submitted, so, um, gotta figure out how to make that work.
So, my question is, when, when do you think we'll have that?
Well, I can go ahead and produce it any time or we can wait until we get, um, uh, submissions from, from everybody. I can tally it up and follow up with Mrs. Burge and see what her input might be and call it complete and move on from there. We can have that done in a matter of days.
Okay, so, once Ward five submits theirs, you're ready to put this information together, get it back out to us?
I sure can, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So, on the action item two that we have here, we'll, we'll see this on the next work session agenda and, uh, it'll come with the, the document provided by the YMCA.
Yes, yes. Okay, thank you. And as you see, part of, uh, we're gonna report regularly, I just spoke to her today to break down, uh, we saw in the previous report, um, of shelter rentals, et cetera, but I asked her this morning if we can break down the actual parks that are being reserved and the shelters within so that we can see, um, a frequency of usage and which parks are heavily used, which parks are maybe underused, et cetera, so we'll include that as, hopefully in future months, uh, we'll see that, that data as well. Thank you.
Okay, uh, now, I never did like the way this, uh, six was on there where it says designated YMCA phone line for city parks and recreation, 'cause that was just to, to highlight some of the things that we could, uh, do, but, uh, but the idea there was to have the co-branding, the last sentence, uh, as, as we were going on there. Do we know that we have, uh, made any progress in that or?
Yes, and this is something, things that I've passed on to, to Tony, hoping that list gets updated. Nonetheless, the, uh, uh, phone situation, uh, the Y has gone so far as changing and trained and instructed staff on answering the phone differently as well. Uh, we've also set up a parks@hoh.org email address, um, and, uh, that forwards directly to Tiffany for inquiries and, and et cetera, et cetera, and, um, yes, some, some steps and some movements towards that have been, have been made.
Okay. All right, so, we'll close that out until, uh, yeah, we'll close that one out as well, so, uh, fine policy and guidelines on council communications and public communications. That was also on the second, do you recall that? That was assigned to you, Mr. Schaefer?
Yeah.
And that, 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 I, I think that was a lot of the whiteboard issue as well.
Yes.
Are we working on that?
Actually, I have some stuff I can bring to the next workshop, uh, on the subject.
Okay, that'd be good.
In the meantime, Mr. Tyler and I will speak and, uh, have something more comprehensive than we've had today.
Okay, great. Another agenda item, but we'll see. And we're still working on the Rose Music Center. Uh, and those ones are all closed out, so that's nice. Going to the end, uh, uh, carriage trails drainage issues, uh, we had asked for basically all the, uh, the, once the sewers and stuff were put in, anytime the city went in there to make corrections, uh, due to drainage issues, and this came up, uh, uh, because we had a resident that, uh, had the drainage issue that was solved, but then we learned that other, uh, issues had happened up there and the, and the city helped resolve those, so we were hoping to get a documentation of all the incidents that we've had and the city had expended resources to, uh, to help solve. Is there progress made on that?
Yeah, I know Scott had some information on it, I saw an email or something, but I'll double check with him. I, um, yeah, we just have the one thing and that was a result of our property, our twenty-five acres to the north draining into Pico's property, which in was draining into, um, uh, backyards of, um, residents up there, so that's been remedied and, um, kind of somewhat an ongoing thing, but that's the only one that we were aware of, but Scott's got the information on that and we'll get that assembled and emailed out as a follow-up.
Yeah, and email follow-up would be fine. Uh, rules of council's been sitting there, uh, for a long time. Uh, we've had a couple more, uh, that Tony pulled up that, uh, that he's made suggestions on, but I know council members had, had indicated that there were other, there were other reasons. And I actually, uh, it's come up a few times now with, uh, uh, how we're gonna interact with Allen and, and such too, so that ought to be addressed, uh, with there. I know that, uh, when I first sat down here, I saw, uh, billings from Mr. Schaefer and signed off of tho- on those, uh, and then, uh, the rules were changed so that the admin committee chairman would take care of that, uh, afterwards, but now neither process is in place, so I think that needs to be addressed as well.
Was the admin chair supposed to sign off on his bills?
That's the impression that I-
Was the admin chair never did that once? I've never seen one of his bills.
Interesting.
Yeah, I've never seen a bill in my life.
Interesting. Uh- Interesting, uh, but-
When, when, uh, Mr. Fisher was the mayor, I know he signed off on your bills. I've never signed off on those, it's the admin chair. And none of this stuff must be too critical, 'cause we're going into the fourth month-
'Cause he gets, he gets contained.
And we're into the fourth month and-
Yeah. It, it is reviewed, I will tell you that, because, um, it's, it's broken down, uh, itemized, categorized, uh, and billed out and looked at at each department. Um, I review it each month that it comes in and, uh, um, quantify it to the existing, uh, encumbrances and, um, and, and build up to the appropriate departments. So administratively, you know, we make sure that, um, the, the billed hours are, are correct and accurate and, and audited and submitted for payment, if that helps.
And did you have some experience doing that?
Before I started it, I had a-
As mayor, did you ever sign off on the bills?
Yeah, certainly did for the first-
Or did you keep doing it?
'Cause it was taken over from the chair.
Yeah, but you're allowed to, is he not? It's a public record, isn't it? Yeah, so sign off on it. Who signs off on it? Who does sign off on it?
I do, Mr. Schommer has.
So he could sign off on it too. You're experienced at it.
Yeah, okay, anyway, the, the relationship between council and the, and the city attorney needs to be defined, redefined in the, uh, rules of council, so, uh...
Doesn't the contract need to be amended as well?
The wording of the contract, uh-
The contract. Yeah, so doesn't it need to be changed as well? I'd make those two changes Monday. 'Cause you don't have an admin committee, nor an admin chair, nor have I ever signed off on his bills.
Right.
And your contract needs to be amended, and Alan, you could prepare both of those changes for us, and we could at least get that part of the council rules changed Monday, and your contract amended Monday, and it could be amended correctly to what it should say, unless there's a problem doing that, and that isn't to exclude any other changes that we might do later. I mean, your contract should be forwarded correctly.
Yes.
Mr. Schommer?
I don't have an issue with reviewing our city attorney's contract and, and amending it, but I think if we're gonna do it, um, I believe it needs to be an appropriate work session agenda item, I believe it needs to be something that we need to go through. Um, I know I've read the contract, um, there are some things that's quote-unquote stood out, um, maybe I need some further clarification on some of those items, uh, but at the same point in time, I'm not comfortable going in and just amending a certain piece unless we're reviewing the whole thing. And I believe I'm taking the words of, of some individuals that, uh, you know, we need to review and discuss all contracts in this city, and I think just not certain pieces of it. Um, I, I, we're not, we need to stop the cherry picking and just, if we're gonna look at it, let's look at it all, that way we can put that to rest, and we don't, we don't have to worry about that until it comes up for an annual renewal. Uh, that's just my personal opinion, um, I, I don't have a problem putting it on Monday's agenda, um, as a first reading, if that's per se, but I'm not gonna be voting on anything until it has a full discussion through the work session, and especially with two members of council going.
I'm not suggesting not reviewing that contract in total, what I'm suggesting is the contract's blatantly incorrect if it speaks to the admin chair and the admin committee, and that would be a change that we could all agree to, not reviewing the entire contract at some future point, but that needed to be changed January first, I don't know why it hasn't been changed yet. Then if the council rules also indicate that the admin chair is supposed to sign off on his bills, we need to correct that, even if there's fifty other changes we do later. Those two changes are way past due, I agreed with you that we ought to look at all contractors, I still believe that, but I, I wasn't aware that that language was specific to the point where the mayor wasn't signing off on his bills. I, I honestly thought Tom was still signing off on those.
Well, it would have sounded like at this time that our city manager is signing off on those, so, it-
You have a contract that we're aware is incorrect, and it could be very simple to fix that portion of it, and it wouldn't exclude looking at it later, and obviously we went three months with it, that way we could go another three months.
That's-
But I'm not, just-
Yeah.
If, if we don't look at it Monday, if we don't change it Monday, I'm fine with that, but I'm not suggesting making that change in lieu of looking at his entire contract, that's not what I'm saying.
Well, my thing is if we're gonna go into it, let's, let's go into it, and that way, kinda like the rules of council, we started the rules of council in January, we've had a little bit of discussion, and it's been this thing that's been sitting out there for so long, let's not turn this into that same exact item.
I don't, I don't know what you're talking about, because the rules of council speaks to the admin chair doing something with the law director, you don't even have an admin committee, let alone an admin chair. I'm not talking about sweeping anything under a carpet, I'm not talking about not reviewing something. There are two things, one is the council rules, one is a contract, and they're both grossly written in such a way that the committee doesn't even exist anymore.
I'm not gonna disagree with you that both items are in serious need of attention, and for that, I'd be more than happy to champion that, that gets on the next work session agenda, and we get that dealt with. If we deal with it in one reading, so be it, I'm more than happy to do that, but I, I don't think we need to rush it through, through, through a next public session. Um, if you wanna see it on the next agenda item, uh, for the work session, I'd like to see that as well. I'll be more than happy to put all of my comments in writing, submit them all to council for the read-ahead packets, and that way we can get those rules of council and the contract done at the same time through the, um, work session, and we can pass it out a first reading, uh, that following council meeting, and done.
Great.
Excellent.
Alan, do you have a copy of the contract, and does it say that? Okay. My first question is, do you- My first question is, do you have a copy of the contract? Not tabbed.
All right, so, proposed changes for Monday, so we can see it on the agenda on Monday, and, uh, we'll plan to have the discussion in the work session.
The one change I would like to see on the attorney's contract is to have the admin committee and the admin chair removed. And then I'd like to see Richards' changes Monday, and then we could discuss those on Monday at the first reading. And then you could send it to a work session five or six times, or however long it takes. And then are you gonna put the changes to the council rules ever on a council meeting, or are there really no changes to the council rules?
I had suggestions for the council rules, and every time I bring it up, I, I hear that other council members have changes that they're going to submit. So, you're right, eventually we're going to, if we don't get those, and-
I would ask that you put the change to the council rules on for Monday, because you need to change the council rules where it speaks to a committee that doesn't exist and a chairperson that doesn't exist. And we, we ought at least have that change-
Right.
-on for Monday.
Right. All right, um... And we had a couple that, uh, for this session, process for notification for applicants to city boards and commissions regarding appointments. And that was from Mr. Styline. Do you recall?
This was how we're going to notify those, uh, they have not been selected, the whole, um, situation with that, and I would just ask that the meeting continue on to next work session, my then I should have some, um, materials to go with.
And letter to Ward five applicants, do we want to discuss that tonight? Well, there was a letter from the council, that has my name on it, but I didn't actually suggest it, I, I did think it was a good idea, but it would be a letter from the council.
In lieu of any other suggestions, why don't I ask that you work with Tony when he gets back and try to draft a letter for us to review?
Okay.
Or we're never gonna get a letter started.
Sounds like Glenn. Right, and with that, uh, that ends the, uh, agenda item.
Mr. Schommer?
Before you, uh, before you call for adjournment, and I hope that was your next move, um, I just wanted to, uh, to introduce real quick, Trevor Britton in the back here, he's a first-year MPA student and studying to maybe get into my line of work, and, uh, through ICMA and OCMA, uh, um, they've reached out and identified some city managers, uh, to, to have, uh, shadowers and, uh, to work with, so, uh, I was, uh, I was hooked up with, with Trevor, and he's reached out, so he stuck it through, I told him he didn't have to stay the whole time, but in our intermission, we, uh, he talked about how interesting it was, and, um, uh, so he's, he's a trooper. So he, he, you might see him at some other meetings, uh, he's gonna, uh, shadow a few times and, uh, get some stuff going for that, so just wanna introduce him and say good job sticking through it.
There you go.
And, uh, with that, uh, we, I return.